All right. I'd like to call this October twenty-second budget meeting for half moon township to order. I'll rise if you're able for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this is our third budget meeting, so we have some updates. And Denise, I'm gonna turn it to you to get us started.
All right. Perfect. So the board asked us to take a look and get some charts and some things to play with. We sent out some information and based off of what we've got, I'm proud to say we're presenting you a general fund budget that is balanced this evening. Now, it does take into account some assumptions. The very first thing is, again, we'll have this sixty-seven thousand a year that we need for capital equipment and park. It will implement a one point seven mil fire tax and a one point six nine general fund tax increase. This is no library tax and no park tax. We have a chart that we played with, which we'll pull up here in just a second. Oh, it's the whole way at the end, isn't it Brett? Yes.
So many ones.
Okay.
And can you make it larger? For us, please, thank you.
Yes. Okay. Can everybody see that? Okay, great. So what we did is we took all of the parcels within our, um, what is it, township, and divided them into thirds. So the low third, the middle third, and the high third, which is the three seventy-six each. And it made a perfect balance. And based off that, we took all those parcels in that three hundred and seventy-six and averaged out what the average, uh, tax assessment is. And then, so your low value, your middle value, and your high value. From that, we then made and played with this as far as what, what the projected, the one point seven for the fire tax and the one point six seven increase, and how that would play out for each bracket, low, middle, or high, for how much they pay per year off of that suggested increase. So you can see, the fire tax for the low is about fifty dollars, for the middle it's about a hundred and fifteen, and for the high it's about a hundred and eighty-five. Now, that's the average. Of course, you're gonna have within that highs and lows. The general fund increase will be an additional fifty bucks. The middle would be a hundred and fifteen and about a hundred and eighty-five for the high. For a total increase, this will be your increase amount of about a hundred dollars for the low, about two thirty for the middle bracket, and about three seventy for the high.
So I had asked them to do this just so we could get a sense of how this was gonna impact our residents. And approximately how many of those residents in each of these. So that's where the low, middle, high is the average. So on average, a third of our residents are gonna pay a hundred extra bucks a year, a third around, well, this is average. On average, a third, two twenty-nine, and a third, three seventy. So that was interesting to me to at least get a sense of what would be the expectation, yes.
I'm sorry, I think this is supposed to be four point six nine. Let me just take a look here. Nope, it's six seven. I can't add. Okay, so when we, when we looked at that, do you want me to go back to the charts?
Before we, I just wanted to see if you absorbed that and if you wanna.
I do, I'm just curious how, how we got it to that point because I thought we were talking about where, uh, the, the last time we all met. I thought we were, the high end would have been more of a six hundred dollar total than three hundred and seventy. I'm, I'm pleasantly surprised.
We based that off of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assessed value home.
Okay.
When we came up with those numbers. But when we looked, when we did a reevaluation, there were only three properties, remember this, there were three properties that had that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar high value out of all of our parcels. So now the brackets that we've put people in, as far as you're either the lower end, the middle end, or the high end, now that two hundred and fifty, those three properties will have about a six hundred and eighty dollar increase.
Okay.
But the average of the properties in the high end will be three seventy.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. We were basing every, like, we were assuming a lot more maybe for that two fifty because that was the number you were going, and that's the highest, right?
Yeah.
Basically, kind of like the highest.
They're about the people that are gonna have, be affected with the highest amount.
Yeah.
And the reason we didn't, so it was really easy for us to go in and instead of doing a separate library tax or a separate this tax and have it, it became much easier if we just said, what is that, the general fund? And then, because we'd be paying from our general fund to pay that park or to pay that, like, so, why not just put it all in there, see what it boils out to, keep that expense in our general fund, and then just pay it out as the expense came in? Does that make sense? So instead of having us, having to set up a separate tax levy for, and then anything for the park we use, and then, if we have leftover, it's, it's general fund that we can use, but this will pay for the, the park. And it still gets us a, a balanced budget in our general fund.
Or we could decide at some point to lower that tax again if we don't need it anymore.
Okay. No questions with the tax chart? Good? Okay. We got a few updated numbers that are good, that are good. Um, one of the items was, uh, we got all of our information from State College Borough. And for our IT. Which, I'm, there we go. Um, and this amount was lower, we lowered this amount due to the, um, board going back to having the exchange license only. So that got updated.
It's not as low as I would have hoped it would be.
How much lower was it? I don't have it open.
Twenty-six, two.
Yeah, it, it's not much. But, but we did update those numbers.
Yeah.
And out here, if you look, we were able to reduce costs a little bit in that category, taking out a thousand because we'd be buying a license for a five-year firewall, so we'd have an expense upfront and push it off for five years, and then you have an additional expense in five years.
Why in two thousand twenty-three is it a total of thirty-five thousand?
This eight thousand with the idea that there would be website update.
Okay.
Again, these are the projections, I wouldn't look too crazy.
Set aside the money just in case.
This is just more, um, yeah, this is more of a planning.
And it's, yeah, it's two years from now, I was just curious.
Mm-hmm. Um, we also, it's gonna be on tonight's business agenda, but we had talked about how we were able to come up with a Comcast deal for three years. Um, they changed their pricing yesterday, today, today. And I thought that was going to be a bad thing, but it's actually gonna work out in our favor, so we're gonna ask to table that later because we'll have lower prices on this. I don't know by how much, but we'll have an additional little savings in there at some point here. Um, but we were able to get it to the point where with that, we are at a balanced budget.
So not extra, but not below.
I mean, it's, it's tight.
Yeah. And one of the things I wanted to do is, I know Dave you had mentioned, uh, in the past too about we, we need to feel the pain in this before, before or balanced with whatever we're asking of our residents as well. What I also wanna make sure of, and I don't know if you've even had an opportunity with all this detail to kinda think about this, is the cuts that we made may be hurting us. I wanna make sure that they're not also going to hurt the residents, if that makes sense.
Yes.
So we're gonna take that burden of, of slicing some of these budgets, but I just wanna make sure that, and maybe we could do it super quickly, that it's not also gonna potentially hurt residents in some way. Does that make sense what I'm asking? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Makes sense. I mean, if you give them a tax increase, it's gonna hurt some people.
Oh, it's gonna hurt every, any tax increase, of course, is it hurt, but I mean the budgets that we slice. So that I know for sure. But what I wanna make sure of is the cuts that we made, we're all comfortable, I guess.
Sacrificing services to the residents.
Correct, correct. So I just wanna do a quick little gut check, maybe even just at the high category levels. And since you've been looking at this so detailed, maybe you could say this is the category I'm concerned about. Um, I'm sure you have a lot of categories you may be concerned about, but I just wanna make sure that we can still provide what we need to the residents without hurting that in some way.
I agree.
I'm concerned about the legal, I'm not going to lie. I think that, that one is, I think we've cut that to the point where it, it may come back, I don't wanna cut off our nose to spider face. And that's something that I don't think we're being realistic about the cost with that. Um, because we're gonna need legal no matter what. And, and to be honest, we're gonna have a lot of questions moving forward as we make changes. I don't think that is a cut that I am comfortable with because we've cut it to the point where it is. Let me find it here.
So we spent about thirteen thousand.
Don't look, that is, that's, that's only to the third quarter.
Oh, that's true too.
So if you look, let me, I can extend this out. Okay, so with legal, I know that there were lower costs as the previous manager had more knowledge and had moved forward. Um, but we're looking, you know, nineteen-eight, twenty-six, thirty-one.
That was budgeted.
That was budgeted, and it's lower, and that's fantastic. But I feel like the amount of twenty thousand.
Borderline?
It is, yeah. I think because of how we wanted to make some changes and, and modify some of the policies and procedures and, you know, we talked about how, um, with our increase in our liabilities, how are the ways that we mitigate that? And there was a suggestion of about fifteen policies we need to put in place. And those policies are gonna have to be reviewed by legal. So if we wanna cut costs in the future, we have to kind of plan ahead. And we can't just dump it all into the next year. We need to start doing this. So I think that that legal's a little too low.
And I'm wondering, because I know, um, another thing Dave said before is let's, let's hunker down and really pick some priority things that like need to get done. So even though we have fifteen policies, are there five that we really should focus on? And can we, like, can we timeline those in any way? Or is it something that if we don't get this done next year, we're really gonna be hurting?
Um, we can, here's the thing, at twenty thousand, we can work with it. If, when, if it's over budget, it's over budget, and then we look at it for the next year.
Okay.
So
Okay.
I think this is, I'm very happy, I know we've worked very hard with how to make this balanced. I don't know, let me go back and undo the hide so we can kinda take a look if there's anything that you see.
And as long as we all kinda understand where the potential, these are some things we gotta keep an eye on.
Yeah.
So as long as we kind of all know that, when things come to us, or we can prioritize and help make decisions in that way, then.
I, I don't know where else we can cut at this point. Um, I mean, we're kind of at our bare bones. I mean, legal ads, again, we can, we'll do our best to keep that down. That's kind of a, it is what it is. I think we might go over budget on a couple of things, but it will help us moving forward.
Yeah, and we might go under budget on a couple of things, which is hopeful, so.
And, and maybe the income is higher than we expect. Hopefully, it is. That'd be great. Um, but remember, this isn't like a end-all-be-all document. This is our guiding document.
All right, thoughts, questions?
I still want the library and the park broke out.
Wait, you still, you said you still want to?
I still want it broken out in the fire department. As separate taxes.
So what's the pros and cons to that, Denise?
Um, you will end up in a, it's possibility to end up in a similar, similar situation as the open space that we currently have, where when you break out a tax into a special tax levy, that is the only place that that money can be spent. So if it gets to the point where you, you're not using that money for that specific cause, you can't use that in another place in your general fund. When you keep it all in the general fund, we have to pay out that thirty-seven for the park. So if we separate out a park tax and just have that thirty-seven, that also has to come in at the same rate for cash flow as which it has to go out. We gotta pay that every month. Taxes are only collected in a certain period. If we put it into our general fund, we have a fund balance that can help create with that fluctuation in cash flow. Um, it, that's also with.
Fire tax you pay out at the end, so we've already have the real estate.
Paying quarters.
So it's gonna be more of an admin, it's gonna be higher overhead to maintain those potentially.
Right.
Or we have, or we can't pay that the way we want to, or the way we normally do.
Monthly payout, that's what makes it more challenging.
Yeah, it becomes less desirable and better to keep it into the general fund where we can then pull that out. And if our fund balance in general fund becomes great, we could just end that tax. You can just immediately boop done, and then.
Get rid of the fire department, or the park, or the library.
So.
They're not gonna go away, so.
No, the fire, the fire is specific for the fire, which is paid out quarterly as per our agreements with the fire company, which also will help coincide with our real estate tax collection. Um, the park is a monthly payment that has to go out.
Right. When is real estate taxes bills start coming out or going out or coming?
They come out in March, and then they have till April thirtieth to pay discount.
Nobody gonna be playing in the park before then, so it really, it's gonna be snow out there, I mean.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
But the loan payments.
The payments.
They, they charge us on a monthly basis.
Well, then we just pay it out of the general fund and reimburse the general fund once the money comes in. As long as at the end of the year, the number's balanced, that's all that really matters.
And so I think that's what you're saying, do we have enough general fund cash flow to do that?
If we keep it in the general fund, yes. The auditors don't like it when you have to reimburse another fund by borrowing from a park.
Yeah, but they don't have to run the township either, so.
Yeah, but what's the pros to it?
The pro is that people see where the money's going. We're, we're raising up everybody's taxes. I know it's only a hundred bucks for the bottom end of things, but somebody's gonna get a five or six hundred dollar tax bill, and they're not gonna be thrilled.
Yeah, but anybody can find that out.
That's absolutely right.
Well, I'm wondering, uh.
They shouldn't have to worry about it, in my opinion.
What I'm, what I'm wondering is, because it has been so long in taxes being raised, can we do more proactive, transparent communications where we can do something out to everybody? They don't have to go find out, we tell them. And we can maybe show them and report some way more clearly, maybe? I don't, you know what I'm saying?
You, yeah, you could, well, two things. Really, when you do the budget narrative for this year, you can explain out of this tax increase where you feel the money out of that's gonna go, and that would help keep Dave where he's saying he'd like people to know.
That doesn't come out in their tax bill, though, that's the thing.
No, no, it doesn't. That is the thing, and they don't understand sometimes. And then to your second point, you can run, eh, eh, how I run you guys' monthly reports, there could easily be a report that shows anything you want.
And we can share it on Facebook page and send it in the, in the mail, 'cause I, I mean, I, I understand.
Well, I'll give you the eighty-five percent scenario. Eighty-five percent of the people are never gonna look at that tax bill, it's gonna go right to their bank, to their escrow account. And all of a sudden, they're gonna let, get a letter from the bank at the escrow saying, your escrow is short three hundred dollars. And they're gonna go, what just happened? And they're not gonna get the thing back out, not gonna look at it, go, why did my taxes go up?
Yeah.
And, and I think it just, we could just eliminate that whole thing, and then if people aren't happy about something, you know, they can see what's going on, say, well, we didn't raise the general fund taxes. These taxes are specifically going to these things.
Yeah. And I think.
And if you don't want these things, then you gotta come in here and tell us you don't want these things. Or if you think it ought to be more for some other things than they are for these things.
Come tell us, yeah.
Come tell us.
Yeah. Um, I think we could still do both and accomplish it, though. If we can do the communications in a good way, that goes out maybe separately or let them know ahead of time, like, here's, here's what we're doing with this, and if we can figure out a way to consistently.
And how are we gonna spend a thousand dollars on letters?
Well, we have that mailing cost in this budget, so if one of the things you wanna do is have a newsletter that goes out with that.
Real estate tags.
You could do that, that's.
Oh, I like that.
That we can utilize when I send them out in March, because we control the county municipal, I can put something in there.
That's a fabulous idea, Dave.
It can be a letter straight from you guys. It can, it can be, you just gotta let me have it in time, and I can send it out with my tax bills.
I think that's a fabulous idea.
That's, that's something to mull over. It's, again, it's up to you guys.
Because I do, I, the communication is incredibly important, I think. Um, again, especially since it's been a very long time, people may not understand. Um, and if the, the big point is explaining why, where, what the money is there for. Um, but I'm also kind of listening, I, I wanna be conscious of what the right thing to do is as far as having that specific set aside uh, versus having it in the general.
See, I, I think the
What are your thoughts?
Dedicated tax idea, it causes too many administrative problems to justify the, um, I don't wanna say low, but yeah, if, if we communicate well enough, I mean, we can avoid the problem where causing that much of an administrative headache is going to solve. You know, it's, it's, the solution is bigger than, or the problem's bigger than the solution, or I don't know, I just said that right, but you know.
Well, what it is, even the administrative headache, we do with what we have to. The problem I see happening is by chance, say, ten years down the road, you guys decide to get out of the library for some odd reason. But if there's extra money in there that was dedicated to that, that has to sit. It's just, is what it is.
The library, it could go to a slow library.
It could go to another library as a donation, but I meant it can't just slide back into our general fund.
So let me give you an example. Right now, we have the open space tax, that is its own separate levy. And that's all done through, um, referendum, but, you know, we're hurting this year. If we had the ability that that wasn't a separate item, and, you know, again, we did a hundred-year projection, this gets crazy, but if you look at, at the end of this year, we're projected to have half a million dollars in that account.
Um, so if we had availability of that money, we wouldn't have to raise taxes?
No.
No? What do you mean?
No, because it'd be just like the social security administration. You pay the social security taxes, and the government doesn't put that in a trust fund box for you. They spend it.
So what I looked at with Brett
I see what you're saying.
Is with what amount comes in, we have put aside a certain part for possible open space future acquisitions, okay? And that, we made a variable of twenty-five percent. If we were able to put twenty-five percent away into future acquisitions, rather than have future acquisitions grow, and we could still pay out our entire lease, but we would be able to have thirty-five thousand additional for the next, and this keeps growing. But this year, we'd have thirty-five thousand original money that we would be able to have in our general fund and make up and still be able to pay out everything if we didn't have it as a special tax levy. So that's why I caution you about special tax levies. Because even though we have this wonderful balance of money, this money that we can put towards future acquisitions, if we don't have ability to buy, then we just sit.
Takes away financial flexibility.
That's correct.
We have a streetlight tax, don't we?
We do.
Why don't we just dump that in the general fund?
It is.
It's not a separate thing.
It's, it's a, it's a separate line item, but it's in the general fund.
But it's almost in and out, because we also pay for those too.
Do the same thing with the other taxes.
That's what I'm asking you to do.
That, yeah, they'll have.
Right, but it shows as a separate thing on the tax list, right?
But we have to keep, so your funds have to be separated? When you have a, like, the open space has to be its own separate fund that we account for, that technically we should be taking the streetlight out. That's something we'll work with our auditors, because that technically should be its own fund.
Oh, okay.
Every fund, whether, and you can see here I have labeled like oh-one, street, street light is oh-two, it should be its own separate company within QuickBooks and its own separate fund. Um, we actually had a discussion about the, the fact that delinquent taxes are collected, and some of those delinquent taxes are going into our general fund, but it actually should go towards streetlight for some people, but the problem is, it was never separated, and to go back all those years, our auditors basically said, no, you're not, no. But moving forward, you should correct those items. So fire protection would be oh-three. Um, open spaces oh-four, state liquid fuels is fund thirty-five, and this is all part of D C E D's outline in the chart of accounts.
Right, but at the end of the year, as long as we don't spend any less money or take any of the money out of that account theoretically and spend it on something else, the balance will be the same. Whether you have a separate account or not, it doesn't really matter, as long as you do your accounting on paper, uh, that you need to do.
Cleaning up what you see here, we've discussed that when we get some time, we're gonna clean that up and make things hopefully where even the citizens can figure out what's going on a lot more. Because right now, that's very confusing, I would admit, yes.
Yeah, so our ideas are like, again, there's all these, all these pieces, right? And, and that, that is part of stuff we can account for in the accounting software. What you really should be seeing
is just the top line, yeah.
Is that, right? And that, that's the way it should go through the budgets. And then when you have questions about it, then, then you can look at those. And then when you have questions about it, then, then you can look at those little pieces, but we really shouldn't be. Looking at this seventy-five line item for one.
Category.
Yes.
So, do we have a sense, cause I'm going back to again, uh, for instance, of parks especially. Do you have any sense of other municipalities, do they have it broken out into like a separate parks? Cause I am just thinking, our parks aren't ever gonna go away, we're always gonna have a park.
Under the library, probably, so.
The one issue with parks really is, you guys had mentioned wanting maintenance out. If you do maintenance, that's a variable where your taxes could literally change every year depending upon.
I'm not interested in that.
Then it becomes, okay, so you s- take that away and it becomes the loan, once your loan's paid, then you guys will still have the decision to continue saving for something else. And it, um, those are really your options there.
You do have general fund money for maintenance of the grounds and that kinda stuff, so if we had to.
Yes.
We could take some general fund ground money.
You could.
And utilize it.
Yep, we could.
We don't have to necessarily buy new trees for it.
The only reason I'm bringing this up is a potential separate, uh, so, you know, we have one park that we're still paying for. We do have a master plan for this park.
Yes, we do.
So, if we wanted to ever do something with this park years down the line. That is a potential reason to have that separate thing designated for the future improvement of this park.
So we're looking at a fee in lieu of, that's part of our discussions, um, for the planning commission. So other municipalities, um, what they do is any subdivision, you either dedicate land. Or you pay a fee in lieu of, and that goes into a separate account. That you then can use on park maintenance, paying a loan on a park or whatever. So we're looking to correct that through another mechanism.
Will that give us enough, though?
Um, over ti- had you, had you implemented that, you're gonna, yes, absolutely.
Like, cause I'm talking, cause that master plan was like a million dollars.
Um, well, you have some, you're paying four hundred and thirty-eight thousand on that.
Oh, I'm talking about this master plan.
Oh, um.
Yeah.
The new, so to do a new park, and I'm sure we could get grants and things to pay for some of it.
Right, and that helps offset, so when you did the autumn meadows, if you had implemented a fee in lieu of and had. Collected that on every subdivision over ten years.
We could have had.
There's some funds there that you would have been able to pay for this.
Okay.
And then a- as subdivisions and plans come in, it keeps adding to that to pay out. So we're, we're looking into ways to kind of increase revenues. And we're working with some other municipalities on how they've done that, so that we can.
Okay.
I wanna give you the Paul Harvey rest of the story. The fee in lieu of was looked at years ago, the problem is, it says fee in lieu, they can give you parkland. If, if you're a developer and you come in and, and you say, well, here you go, have a couple acres, have a nice day. Now we got another park we can't afford to pay for, on top of the ones we can't already afford to pay for.
So now we have open space.
That's right.
I, and I thought we were talking about somewhere putting in that we would have better designation of, you can't just give us a couple acres somewhere, so some.
At that, and it would be appraised, it would be ninety percent of the appraised value of the land after full development with all utilities.
So I would, I don't remember where that is, in the Souda or somewhere, or?
We're looking at.
Okay, but I do specifically remember that being an issue and we wanted to.
Gonna be a lot of legal issues that have to be resolved on that, and that's long term.
I know.
And no development's coming in for a couple of years, it's gonna do anything for us, and right now, we're in a short term mode.
Yes.
Cause now, cause we want to be, but because we are, so.
So I guess that's our question for here, we are in short term mode. And it's kinda hard to make a long term decision about, should we have the designated park levy and separate account? To go do future, I don't know if we're ready to talk about that or try and make that decision.
Because of the way that would pid- pigeonhole those funds into being used just for parks, I don't think. Right now, our current situation where we're kinda hamstrung for funds is a good, eh, eh, good time to make the decision to. Put money away that we can't touch unless it's for a specific reason.
And as long as we can communicate well.
Yes.
To the ci- that's top priority.
I mean, I fully support the, the fire tax, because that's, we, we know that mu- that amount every year. Eh, we're, we're told what it is and, you know, it's, if, it's supposed to jive with the tax and, but, um, yeah.
And looking future, that's, we're just gonna be paying more in fire.
Oh, yeah, exactly, we're gonna have to add.
Funny question for you, if you have the library, the fire and the park broke out, does that give you the same net result? Or is that different than what our numbers are right now?
We did it so that it would be the same net result, um, and for ease of. Um, making a balanced budget, we kept it all within that same.
Yeah, that's more why it's in general, it's just, it was easier to show you guys that it balanced out. And then that can be, if you guys wanna tinker with those numbers right now.
We can look at that chart, so if you, let me go back to the chart. Alright, so if we take it out and we do the, if you do point six seven here. And make this four. It, it's the same net effect, but again, we're not pigeonholing anything.
The park would just drop the general, your general would wind up being your two point nine eight, and your park would cover the rest sorta deal, it, it was the same numbers. We just chose to put it in general so you could see it more simple, but the.
What's the current real estate mileage excluding open space?
Two point nine eight.
Two point nine eight.
Two point nine eight, so your general would be two point nine eight. And that gives us the same net numbers.
Yeah, we didn't separate out park in general, I, we would have to take a look as to what each tax levy would specifically have to be. I think, I think they are, right?
Yeah, library needs higher than, than park.
Yeah. So again, same net effect.
Same net effect, but different public opinion.
Um, depending on the communication, again.
I think.
Well, it's not, you're not.
It's more administrative.
In my driveway, and I told you this, but I had a senior in my driveway, the day after the meeting was just about the tears. Because they had to pay all this money to have their septic tank pumped. And now, I told him, I said, we're gonna have a tax increase, now, I'm just figuring they're probably at the two hundred and twenty dollar range or something like that. But this senior had to go take a part-time job at a grocery store to make ends meet this year. So I'm not real happy with where we are, and I know none of the rest of the board is either. But if I'm gonna slam people for a tax increase, I want those things going specifically to fire, park, library, open space.
And they will, Dave. I, but I think we can accomplish that with the communication and not create additional expense and.
Overhead.
And overhead on, in the office.
Cause honestly, though, where, and I don't know this literally, where would a resident see that?
A real estate tax bill.
Which we can communicate with their tax bill.
Yeah, you can put something in.
In the envelope that says, this is your new taxes, or this is why it went out.
I just look at what I owe by what date and.
Yeah, people will.
And a lot of people will, and, yeah, so eh, really, it's the same net result. You're still raising taxes, unless you've come up with an idea that can somehow not raise taxes and still come up with a three hundred and eighty. Something thousand shortfall. The, the net effect is the same, so what we're able to do now is present you with, this is the net effect to get us to, with all of your cuts that we've gone through. This is what.
And this is the best way that you think makes sense.
We have no other options at this point that we can come up with, we are open to any idea, other than tax.
Yeah, as far as the buckets.
We, we were in agreement that general would be the best, um, solution for you right now, just because of how tight it is and you annually change this. If we're doing better next year, and you guys want to make the different levies and it works better, you can do that, it's an annual thing.
I, I have to say, I actually. Lee, I like, I really like the idea of making a separate parks tax. Because that way we guarantee we are putting money away to refurbish this park next. I really do like that idea, but I just do not think it's a good idea to start that this year, um.
Yeah, I think.
Next year's budget time, we can revisit it, you know?
Once you get through the pandemic, then you have it, you can make that fund, and that can, again, that can go towards the master here. We can look at that and have a policy for, this is how much goes towards of what revenue comes in. You can choi- choose to drop it, so it's an even, or you can choose to put some money aside, so that you can build this master plan. Um, that's all items that, again, we can look at, it's a yearly basis that you have to approve the taxes.
And I think we can also, again, outreach to the residents, communication out when, when we have this public meeting. For the budget, absolutely, um, so that we can have more than one conversation, more than one piece of paper in front of them. That says that this is what's happening, and ask them to hold us accountable. If they wanna come and make sure that this money is going to where we say it's going, put it out there in front of them.
Charts, I don't know how often you guys look at them, but I do run them every meeting. You'll see a profit and loss that shows income out, I run the chart that Dave requested, where it shows real estate and earned income every single time. I'm really, to make any charts you guys wanna see, to keep you or the citizens or anyone.
Cause we can even have that as a point of, uh, order on our list to double check, you know, how are we doing with the bud- budget check? Let's go through each month and make sure, especially this year.
Set those with the agenda, so. When we have that, it's all in Dropbox, we've been running them for a couple of months now to just kinda keep. Keep us even accountable as to where are we with things, how are things going, where? And we had to update those when we pulled funds out, made them into separate funds, so.
If we're con- if we're intentional about bringing that up and talking about it and making sure that it's following what we're talking about here. For the next year, and then that's our constant evaluation to see where we are.
Yep, and our budget versus actual looks exactly like, I mean, basically, that's exactly what you're looking at when you're looking at the expenses, you've got your budget and your year to date.
Okay. Cause we can also, well, the taxes are the taxes, but, uh, speaking of the budget in general, um. We can also have maybe a quarterly checkpoint. Just to see, you know, how are we doing, are we doing better with our revenue? If so, do we, can we do a little bit more somewhere where we were doing less, or, so those can be our checkpoints as well.
Can we move on to the other funds quickly?
Oh, other funds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, fire protection, we talked about this, um, there was a request that came in. For, um, Warriors Mark request came in last night at eight P M.
Did you all get a chance to see that?
I did not.
Um, they, I can pull that up.
You can just tell us about it.
I think you should see it, I think you should see it.
See it.
You got a nice Christmas last time.
Um.
It's a big, it's a big ticket list.
Um, so they're asking for a hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred, or any portion thereof.
And we did tell them. Tell us your wish list.
Right.
Um, now, with that being said, I like to run budgets. Where if you do not get your request in by August, August, the first week of August, you set a date and say, this is the date. And if your requests aren't in, they're not considered. Um, when we did this, we didn't get anything back from them about their request. They had come to a meeting, you had said, give us your request for the budget, and I just got this last evening, so. Um, we did our budget without their request, because it hadn't come in. And then we only, you know, we, looking forward, there was the idea of, I don't know, six, we'd had no idea what that wa- amount was gonna be. So, um, this budget doesn't have anything in there for their request.
And so if you go back to the request, so, cause not everybody was able to read it, um, they have these ten, and I can't remember what the. A C B A's stand. What is it?
Air packs.
So they are quite expensive, it's seven thousand.
Go into a burning building and see somebody's children.
So they carry it on their backs.
Yeah, special masks.
And, I mean, absolutely needed, we're not saying that it's not needed. It is a very large expense, and it looks like, eh, I don't know how they were gonna do this, but it looks like, uh, where's the expiration? They expire May twenty twenty-one, next year, they have to replace all of them.
Uh, that's Port Matilda's in the same thing, that's what they say too.
And when Port Matilda got our request, we, when they set their request in, we worked with them and talked about, that's that thirty-four percent. That we feel is half man's portion, since that's what we pay on workers' comp, and it is the responsibility of other townships to.
Put that in as well.
They're in, right, the amount in their budgets.
What portion do we?
Can you go down there, do they have some plan, or they said?
They're gonna use fireman's relief and then bank financing. I mean, this is a tough stretch, and I don't even, I mean, you know, I don't even know if we, what we could do.
And if they're financing, they'd probably be financing, you know, you know, we, if we can't do anything this year, we could maybe potentially do something for next year.
And I think that's where we're at at this point.
Yeah.
Uh, I think this is a very late request.
Yeah.
Especially since this is our third budget session and we just now found a balance, um. When you look at the draft budget, there may be some additional funds at the end of the year. And if there are, you can certainly, as a board, choose to divvy that out to them.
Okay, I would definitely like us to consider that.
Sure.
Is this, under the fire protection, this tax levy, it, are you allowed to use it for, is EMS included, or is it only fi- it's only fire protection?
EMS, you can levy a separate tax for EMS.
Right, but that's.
But this is just fire.
Wondered if you had extra, it has to go just to fire, okay.
Um, so therein is the fire without this year's request from them. I'm happy to send.
So thoughts on?
But it looks like we will have an ending balance, correct?
So do you wanna at the end of the year, see if we could give, wanna vote and send them some?
Hasn't been advertised for adoption yet, we can make any change we want now.
Yes, we can.
And if we're gonna jack up taxes to pay for general stuff. I'd rather put another fi- even if you just gave them five thousand bucks and said, do with it what you will, towards that. And we're sorry, we can't help you out, we don't want anything else, but that's it.
You can do that.
You know, I would rather do that, and, you know, if, if they need a air exchange or air pack, it would hard pay for one.
Yeah.
We could probably get Warriors Mark Township to write, they'll probably write them a big check anyways, cause they're much more generous than us.
So, so what you're saying is just to use potentially what we have at the end of the year in that fund, is that what you were saying, or?
And just increase the, uh, fire levy by five thousand bucks.
Oh, gotcha.
We're talking about what, a hundred and, was it a hundred and some thousand, is whatever we had, what was that, one point seven mils or whatever it is?
That one point seven, um, that.
Change that, cause we still have a balance, so when you put that five thousand in, we still have money, we're still to the good.
Yes, and so, yeah, but that's where I.
I know you don't wanna reward.
So here's where.
Later bad behavior, but, but they're not being paid to do that, and it's a tough job, and those guys bust their butt. About every week down there trying to keep that place going.
So if we look, so one of their air packs is seventy-one hundred, I just put that in there for one full air pack. If we look, the ending, projected ending fund balance would be thirty thousand, if we have that at the end, you can just divvy that up how you wish. And we can plan then for the next year how that would work out, the thirty thousand starting would be our balance to then pay for the, as taxes come in. Now, right now, that covers a truck payment, if they have other equipment requests, that's not covering any equipment requests. So when you look at this ending fund balance, I caution you again, don't look at it as, oh, we're gaining all this money or saving it. Because you know they're gonna come to us with requests for a new truck or a new hose or whatever it might be. This is just planning for, and I, you know, this is not even the amount to cover the thirty-four percent for next year. Um, we're just looking at, this is a rough idea of what will go out. So at the end of the year, if you wanna use this fire tax, if there's a balance in there and Warriors Mark has financed all this, you can say, we'll give you the thirty thousand we have left. Cause we have it, or divvy it out however you want, because it's specific just for fire, and it will depend on the cash flow coming in.
We can roll that over, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was my, gonna be my question.
We can roll that over for next year.
Yep.
And then, you can, we could set it aside as a board and say, when you have special requests, then we could do what Warriors Mark could do. And cut a check loose to pay for something now that they need now.
So there's not financing and extra charge, yes, correct.
Good question, do we have, what does this year look like?
So.
Do we have anything for the end of this year? No.
No, this would be a brand new tax.
Oh, that's right, that's where, oh, sorry, that, duh.
Okay, so.
Told you I wasn't being sharp tonight.
I just added in the pack of one.
Yeah.
One pack to start, and then we'll send that with the message that requests really need to come in August. And then if there's stuff left over, and we can put that in a letter that says if stuff's left over, we'll happily.
Yeah, entertain more.
It also helps get us, if we stick with the same formula we do with Port, there is three different municipalities that make up who Warriors Mark covers.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what is our portion between the municipalities?
Is that how we do it? How do we get it out there?
Franklin volunteer fire company.
Yeah, I, it's, I actually don't know, because they run a little different than Port, does Port's a flat out thirty-four, they run off a population. We could get you that percentage, but I don't. We could get you that percentage, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
Franklin's probably about two percent. They got nothing going on.
Yeah, we are the middle.
They haven't built a new house in twenty years.
So I guess our point is we, uh, they won't get anything before May, but at the end of next year, we could, we can decide.
At least they know it's coming.
Yeah.
If you got it in there.
Yeah, and implementing the fire tax lets them know that we plan on funding them.
That's a good point, that's a commitment.
Right.
That's more of a commitment.
Any issues with that? Okay, fantastic, let's go to another easy one.
I just wanna say, I think this, just again, this is a good thing with the fire tax because. The way that fire protection is moving, I feel like we're gonna have, we're gonna get there anyway as far as having to pay more.
Yes.
So this is planning, this is pre-planning for it a little bit.
Some, some capital on hand when time comes where.
Yep.
The firefighters need to be paid.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to some other easy ones, right? Let's start um with capital buildings. There's no plan for anything, so the windows got installed, the new windows today. Um, yeah, I don't know if you noticed, we have new windows. Um.
Yeah.
Behind you.
Behind you.
Right behind you.
For some reason I thought it was only that side. I think it's only that side, yeah, only that side.
Well, yes, with the ones that we had to pull the screen out, so the new windows are there.
Excellent.
But those are new windows.
There's no income and no expense. We only have a balance of about two thousand in our capital building, so there's really not much to talk about there, right? Great.
I mean, it's not great, but okay.
Well, but there's no, there's no plan, right? Again, this is getting us through this year.
Yes.
How do we get through? So we have no capital building plan, uh, that's supposed to be on our strategic plan, but.
Okay.
Can't really move forward with that right now, can we? Um, park fund, again, this is literally just the thirty seven thousand going in. Right, to, which is basically paying our, our loan. Um, let's go to liquid fuels next. Okay, so liquid fuels doesn't balance from net income to net expense. What you should know is this was originally a hundred and ten. We had, that was in your one and ten from like twenty sixteen seventeen. So we got a cost estimate update and that will be one thirty to ninety since, you know, prices of materials continue to go. Up through the years. What we're gonna ask for is, and I'll show you this real quick. We're asking for a grant from the county of sixty two thousand. We won't know if we receive that or not until a little later. But if you look, then your income is one seventy eight and your expense is one seventy eight, so you'll balance in that fund.
Okay.
And just to be clear, this is the easiest way of showing it, but actually when you do get awarded a grant, that goes through your general fund. So that'll be general in and out, but it's the way to show you.
So it doesn't balance as of now, but we also don't have to do a road project if we don't receive a grant, so that can be taken away. Um, I'm kind of, the grant is due tomorrow, we're getting that submitted and we're kinda waiting on that. So I have it listed as we will have a road project, which will de- right, and this will deplete. Uh, a portion of our liquid fuels to the point where uh we will have a deficit spend here if we do that. Without the grant.
Without the grant, okay.
Okay, um, uh, next one, capital equipment. So, there's an idea here that we would work on some equipment and possibly get some loans. But before we even go there, just looking at this year. Just this year, if we transfer in the thirty thousand, we have an income um versus expense difference of about two thousand. So that balances out. That's not a plan to do anything with the equipment, anything moving forward, that's just to get through this year. Any questions on that? Yeah, it will leave us with about a, enough to make a payment, almost make a payment next, the following, almost.
So we will need to put money, transfer money from general fund in there.
Yep, thirty, we'll still need thirty thousand transferred.
Okay.
Okay, so no questions there, so we've gone through that. Um, the only other fund we've got is open space. Wait, did we do the park? Yeah, we did the park.
Yes.
Open space, okay. Whew, there are two bank accounts for open space. It's all one fund, but we have our operating and then our future acquisition. We did a long projection for a hundred years out because we just took Joanne Fisher in. And we have sixty years before. We gotta think, uh-oh, cause we go, we go negative for a little bit and then we go back up positive. Um, and in the end, in the end, let's just take a quick ganter over there. You should end up with about ninety seven, a hundred years from now, about ninety seven thousand in your operating expenses with if you left everything as it is. And your future acquisitions can have about six million in it. Yeah, okay. That's assuming everything as it is. Let's go back to today. With just today, what we were looking at is. Your operating account balance is about thirty three projected for the beginning of the year. When you look at your income, your income's gonna be about one forty two. Um, your expenses is gonna be about one thirty, so you're still positive here. Um, what we're looking at is this transfer right here. This thirty five thousand would be twenty five percent of the income being transferred to the future acquisitions. The idea being that we wanna buy some permanent easements and take chunks of time out of the projections. At the end of the ninety nine years. So anytime somebody has interest and we've sent out letters. The idea is that balance at the end will be much more net positive because we'll be cutting off those lease payments. But we made the assumption that that doesn't happen, that nothing changes for ninety nine years. So, um.
And that goes towards one of our main strategic goals, which is to preserve the land in the township.
And then it will be permanently preserved.
Not just for ninety nine years.
Right, so, so this, this right now. Assumes that twenty five percent of the income will be transferred into the opera, into the future acquisition. And it's still a net balance, positive net balance for the next uh year without any changes.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Your ninety nine year production, projection, most people took a seventeen year advance, the early people, did you pull that out?
Yes, we did. And we included a two percent CPI increase every year, year over year. We, I mean, I'm not, no joke.
We ran app by app to make sure we knew when those with advances, those who haven't. We studied that for a good month or so.
Yeah, and so, I mean, if you re- Dave, to give you an idea. You, you'll see the balance changes in certain years dramatically and it's because certain leases will drop off. Um, like. When you get towards the end here, and that's why we go negative for a while, like you'll see there's a negative balance in here. But then what happens is some of these drop off and then you, you get a pretty positive balance going again. You go, you can kinda see it here. So we have until twenty eighty until we go negative. I don't wanna say we're kicking the can down the road. But this one, I, I'm okay with kicking the can down that road.
Well, you know, somebody didn't have a vision, there'd be no national parks, there'd be no. You know.
Yep.
And again, this is only if nobody gets a preserved lease, a permanent preservation, so.
Well, whether they get one or not, it's probably gonna depend on our open space board and, and what they come up with and whether it's doable or not.
But this, yeah, this takes the obligations into account.
So we have about five minutes before our actual supervisor meet, board of supervisor meeting starts, so how, how do we need to wrap this up this evening? What do you need from us? Do you need anything from us right now?
So the idea is with the, would you like us to put together a final budget? We can do another budget meeting if you want, or we can put together a final budget for advertising with the assumption of. The one point seven mil fire tax and the one point six nine, see I have six nine here. I'm learning how to add today. One point six seven general fund tax increase. And it will not look like their, your charts, it will be the D C E D budget for um presentation, so it, it's. Cleaner in the line item, all that's been pushed together, hidden so to speak.
And so the question for us is, do we need to get together again, right?
Yes.
So we have another budget meeting scheduled. Would we need or want any other discussion or clarification or numbers or anything else? Any, anything else for us before we have a final budget prepared?
I'm personally comfortable with what Denise has prepared, Denise and Brett and Amy. Staff, yeah, excuse me, I started to go around the horn. I, I think you guys did a tremendous job. Um, it does pain me to raise taxes, but. As, as it's been said repeatedly, it's been ten years. Um.
Well, and that's not the reason.
Well, no, I know that's not the reason, I absolutely know that's not the reason, but at the same time, it's been ten years. So yeah, I, I say we move forward with it.
Do you, Chuck, what, do you need anything else? Any other questions, anything else for us to talk about?
The people know where it's going, like Dave said, whether you sent the letter out with the thing or it's a separate tax. As long as people look at it and go, you know, I'm paying for a park, I'm paying for library.
I couldn't agree more.
Can I? And that's, there's no way around not raising taxes.
And that's where you five come in. You can start brainstorming as of tonight, all the way till next March, that's when they go out, so.
I was gonna say that whatever insert goes in it, you know, we all need to agree on what it says and the information contained.
Well, like I said, I think we should do multiple things too, so I think let's make that one of our priorities.
I say Brett, why don't you put some ideas together? I hate to dump it on you, but since you're the finance guy.
Well, not at all, I can, I can definitely put things together, bounce them off of you.
We can have multiple ways to communicate.
The very first ways to do it is when we present the draft, cause remember, this isn't the draft budget, this is how we want the draft budget to even look. So when we present the draft budget for the public to provide comment, we can put that out there and say, and have a narrative that goes with it that says. Please know that this budget increases taxes by this amount and this is, this per, is because we have this payment. Which would be, if it's, if it were in a separate tax levy, it would be this amount going towards this. We can, however you want it to do it, but when we present it to the public for just draft and comments, we can start there.
We want that insert though in the taxes, which I think is, is great, but then there's gonna be other communications up way.
Once we get something written, we can put it out on all our, we can website, Facebook, listserv. Any cheap, more or less cheap opportunities, you know, it saves you guys an extra mailing, that's when we can get them.
Yep.
With my taxes that have to go out anyhow, so.
So at least we know our first opportunity is when the budget is presented.
Yes.
How many things can you stuff in a tax envelope? Can we get everything for the year?
Once, I was gonna say, if it changes the way.
Would you like us to have an additional budget meeting or would you like me to? Get this prepared in the D C E D form and then we can put it on a regular board agenda to talk about putting it out for public comment.
That's what I'm thinking, that's what I was asking.
I think is, can we stomach this? Do we see any place we can cut anything or change anything? And I don't think that we're gonna be able to cut anything.
I don't either.
Or change it, so I don't see any point in having it.
I agree.
I gotta tell you Denise, you know, I don't know what twenty twenty two is gonna be like, I don't know what twenty twenty one's gonna be like. But I don't think COVID nineteen's gonna go away anytime soon. You know, until somebody comes up with a shot in the arm that can either prevent you from getting it or cure you immediately. Uh, I think just the way our society is right now, we're gonna, we might have to hold our breath for a long time. So run that office like you're swimming the length of the pool without coming up for air.
Oh, trust me, we do, we do. And, and yeah, we, we've been working, like I said, we bring in our own supplies from our home offices, like. We look for every opportunity.
To do that, but.
Well, it's not expected, again, when you say we have to hurt, Dave, we, we hurt.
But I expect the road crew, you know, rather than, you know, renting whatever, having a contractor come in, if you can get our own shovels out, do it. So.
And if there's things that we need to have done, we have residents that look for volunteer opportunities.
We've been, yeah.
So let's take advantage.
The Lions Club wants to work with us on things, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, we've got a lot, like, and they're not, they don't have to be huge things, right? But they have service projects that they need to do. And that is something that maybe if it takes two thousand dollars off of a line item because somebody volunteered.
Yep.
I'm great with that. All right, I'm gonna stop this.
Yes, are we good?
Is, is the next board meeting early enough for you to get us? Together for approval? Do you need another, a, a meeting or something for us to approve anything ahead of time?
I don't think we need an addition, I think this covered the budget meetings, I think we can say that officially, we can cancel the fourth. And we'll make it part of the next. Board of Supervisors, not, not the one that's gonna start in like thirty seconds.
We need two meetings in November, or can we?
But just. I, I will, I will let you know, the hope, of course, you know, my intention is to cancel what we can. I would like to have one whenever possible, but um.
Do one in November, one in December.
I think we typically try and do that.
Yeah.
I know there have been times, Miss Wen.
Can you call this one to close?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, so we're good here, right? Um, no more business, budget meeting is closed, thank you.
Now. We're gonna end this one.
I, I'm sorry.
If you go out there and you stand on Susan Lane to the right-hand side of the cul-de-sac, it's a pretty good grade down that hill. And then his driveway comes off at, not totally the bottom of the hill, but it's on the way down the hill. If you tried to come off up where the cul-de-sac is, it would, it would drop right down into his house. It's, it's not feasible.
In that upper lot, the one, the higher one?
So this, this is one of the suggestions we gave to the developer to come back to us, which was, and I don't know if it fix, it doesn't fix the issue of who buys this lot, who buys this lot, but um, there could be a shared driveway coming from this top 108R2 down to 108R3. We went out and looked at it today, and that is completely feasible, but it still doesn't solve the fact that this subdivision is creating a, this owner, what happens with this? When these lots sell or?
What happens with what?
There's nothing in writing about the right-of-ways or the shared driveway agreements.
That house has been there more than 21 years, gonna have use by right anyways.
Which the courts will then have to decide.
No, cuz it's used by right, cuz it's been there more than-
It's a prescriptive right-of-way, which the courts will then have to decide. We check with legal.
Well, I can tell you from experience they won't.
Someone has her hand up, up there, Kathy, has that driven?
Yes.
And then I see Jeff is on too, so if we wanna ask, um, Mr. Stover.
So if you wanna acknowledge Kathy, I think that's all she did.
Yes, Kathy, I think I saw that you raised your hand. You can go ahead and state your name and, um, make your comment.
Um, yes, the temporary, you know, cul-de-sac for the easement to Mr. Wells, that is shown on Plan Book 53, page 121, that was approved by the township in 1997. That is when Mr. Wells obtained the lot addition from Paul Smith for his house and the driveway.
And when was this?
It was Charlotte Smith, I'm sorry. Uh, Paul Smith was already deceased at that time. And Mr. Wells did sign the plan at that point, in 1997.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? This is Joseph Wells again.
Yes.
When did this, when did Mr. Smith's original subdivision, when was that overwritten? And when was it advertised?
I don't know who can answer that.
I know. His original subdivision when Lot 108 was created?
That is from, so we put together a little Word doc here. The, nineteen eighty-eight is the original plan where Susan Lane appeared. You can see Lot 27, right here, is Mr. Wells, and it was supposed to have a common driveway with Lot 25. You can kinda see here, it says "common drive" right here. Okay. Then, nope.
This is Mr. Wells again, but the original plan for Susan Lane was to go all the way and connect with Lutz Lane.
Connect with Smith Road.
Lutz Lane, which then connect with Smith Road.
You mean going through to Smith Road or Lutz Lane, Mr. Wells?
Lutz Lane is a circular road, so Lutz Lane-
Yeah, here, here's fifteen P. We're looking at this. Susan Lane-
You're on my, my property.
But Susan, it, Susan Lane was here. This is still the cul-de-sac.
Right.
This is Mr. Wells' property. Lutz Lane is up here.
And it continues around, it connects with Smith Road. Which way is it to, to the left? If you continue beyond the property to, what is Mr. Wilson's Lot 108-3, you know, oh. Let, Susan Lane reconnects to Lutz Lane down the hill, never mind. We'll talk about it some more.
Yeah, that-
That was your-
Okay, so after this plan which created the lots-
Let me just say this, and then I'm going to leave this meeting. I did not appreciate the man that said, "I would have to be stupid not to sign the agreement." So, goodbye. You said stupid.
It would be foolish.
Foolish, okay. That also is not a very nice word, since you do not know me. I, I think that was not nice for a government official.
A lifestyle.
Um, so let's get back to some-
Some, hold on, sorry. Let's get back to some organization about the flow of this conversation, cuz we're kind of all over the place. So, uh, I almost wanna like back up because what is on the, what is on the discussion tonight is about a waiver.
And action on the plan.
An action on the plan.
We've thrown it back to the developer to come up with something, since the planning commission has asked, or has approved this, or has pushed it forward to the board with the fact that there would be an agreement between the two. So now it goes back to the developer, unless the board would like to discuss or have some sort of information, but the developer needs to come up with a solution for it.
Okay.
They're saying that, the developer's saying that there isn't anything extra needed because they say that this is already a right-of-way agreement existing, but it's prescriptive, which means that the courts have to decide that. There's nothing in writing.
Well, may I, may I interject?
And is this Kathy again?
Yes, you need to state your name for the record.
This is Kathy. Plan Book 53, page 121, this is recorded documents.
Kathy, Kathy, I'm, I'm sorry. Can you please state your name? Because I'm sorry, I don't even know who you are. So can you state your name and what you're representing, please?
Kathy Henry from Henry Surveys. And Fred may interject also. There is an agreement per Plan Book 53, page 121, which is a recorded document.
Right here.
Separate recorded documents being a right-of-way agreement, a shared right-of-way agreement, et cetera. No, there is not a separate document recorded within the recorder's office. But the plan that references this is recorded, and it specifically says an easement.
There's a dot that says access agreement. You're looking at it right now, and Note 8 doesn't clarify specifically anything about that. So what we're asking is that something be provided in writing, or the developer come to us with a solution.
Okay, and talking to Mr. Wilson this afternoon, a possible solution would be
An exclusive right-of-
An exclusive access- access right-of-way, whatever you wanna call it. For Mr. Wells-
For a twenty-five foot strip?
For a twenty-five foot strip, a right-of-way, not title fee. There's a difference. That he would be able to continue to use his driveway to his house. And then create another driveway-
Parallel driveway.
To Lot 108R-3.
Within the title land of 108-3.
Okay, and I'm sorry-
That's parallel and twenty-five feet.
This is Fred Henry that's also speaking.
Okay, so is that, I'm sorry, yes, we, we can hear the multiple folks, so that's Fred Henry as well?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Regardless-
I think Mr. Stover knows what I'm talking about.
Thank you. If you could pause one second, Denise?
Regardless, the plan as it is now should be tabled, and the developer should come up with a solution and come back to the planning commission for review, and then, right, with those items changed.
Okay. Do we need a motion to make that happen?
The easement issue on Smith Road is different than this driveway thing. That's another separate-
That, so that waiver, we can act on when a plan comes back
Okay.
that has been amended to deal with the fact that Mr. Wells has not agreed to a shared driveway maintenance agreement.
Okay, so, so for us this evening, this is all very informational, this is good, but we have, we, we could act if we wanted to.
Yes.
Um, or we can wait for developer to come back with information and, and options.
You know, I gotta question you. What does Mr. Wells want to do?
Good question. Is Mr. Well, do we have a representative for Mr. Wells at all?
I believe he hung up.
Yeah, I think he-
Okay.
He does not want to do anything. His property as is, is fine in his mind, and he has agreed to nothing in writing.
Okay.
May I add to that?
Yes, and who is that? I'm sorry.
All right, I had my hand raised. This is Heather Wilson.
Thank you.
I'm a property owner, my husband Alan Wilson, and I'm very sorry he's working out of town. I wish he were able, I'm not knowledgeable as he is, but, um, the Henrys are speaking on our behalf.
Okay.
As, as far as Mr. Wells goes, we have made many attempts to try to, um, work with him and come to a, a, a nice solution. The bottom line is, you know, um, after he was able to obtain the additional ground for his house, he still, he had a right-of-way on the top side of his property, but then still chose to build his driveway on the bottom over the bottom half of what was Mr. Smith, but then we purchased from Mr. Smith, unaware of any type of gentleman's agreement that they may have had. So, you know, we're very willing to come to a, a nice solution that works for everybody, but he just, um, Alan is trying to work with him. He has had a few conversations. It just does not seem that he's willing to do anything.
So that's why you need to come, you and your, um, survey company needs to come up with something and then bring it back to us that solves that issue. Whether or not that is not subdividing that portion.
And-
I, the Henrys can speak to that. I think that we were under the impression that there didn't need to be anything additional, but I'll let them speak to that.
And one thing I may wanna ask, since I think I saw, uh, Jeff Stover, our solicitor, online. Is that correct, Jeff? Are you there?
I am still here, yes to no.
Is there anything that hasn't been spoken that you would want us to know or, or be cautious about in, in why we are asking for these different options to be made?
The concern is, who is going to maintain this jointly-used driveway? Uh, so even if you accept, uh, Ms. Henry's, uh, statement that the, the recorded plan creates a legal right-of-way, that's not the, the real issue. The real issue is our ordinance requires where a driveway's gonna be shared, that there be a written agreement that can be recorded that states how it's going to be shared, who's going to maintain it, how is that going to be handled? Because that often results in disputes and litigation, complaints to the township. That's why that's there. So where you have a situation here where they're gonna share a portion of this, uh, how is it going to be shared? And unfortunately, Mr. Wells doesn't want any part of that, but, so we need some way around that so we don't have that issue that will spring up down the road.
This is, this is Fred Henry. Can I interject something to Jeff? Yeah, what we were proposing was a twenty-five, that Wells exclusively uses the lower twenty-five feet of the, of the strip. That would be not a common driveway, but an exclusive driveway. And then Lot, what is that Lot number?
108R-3.
Yeah, the, 108D-3 would use the western side of the twenty-five foot strip for a parallel driveway. So they would not be sharing the driveways. They would have exclusive driveways and then exclusive rights to maintain. One maintains the southern portion of the twenty-five feet. The other one maintains the northern portion.
Denise and I-
I mean, that would work.
I will show you.
But Lot 108R owns the whole property.
Okay, pause one second.
Yeah, Denise and I actually took a ride out there today to kinda just to see what this looked like. And there's definitely enough room to put in two parallel driveways, and that's actually what we discussed while we were out there. But I mean, again, it's just going back to what Jeff had said. Sharing the driveway without an ax, any type of access agreement or maintenance agreement could be, you know, could be a legal nightmare.
Yes, that's what they're saying. That's why they have to do something. So, so basically, the stumbling point is that you can't get consensus with the landowner.
I got a question for Mr. Stover.
Oh, go ahead.
Jeff, you still there? Yep, still here. If the person that, that buys the new empty lot, not Mr. Wells, if they agree to do all the maintenance on it, would that solve the problem? I'm just curious.
I guess if there was something, well, I'd have to really look at that, Dave. In, in theory, it would. You still have a situation where two different parties are using the same stretch and, uh, you know, there's always the potential for a dispute, but, but certainly that would go, that would go a long way, depending how it was written.
I agree that shared driveways are always a problem.
Yeah, we know that.
Did you please repeat that question?
Uh, the question I had for the solicitor was that if the person that bought the new lot, if, if they had a contract said they would do all the maintenance, that would that solve the problem?
So basically, the Wilsons.
Yeah, the Wilsons or theirs in the signs.
Yeah.
The, the, the other Mr. Wells coming down that hill, I mean, if he didn't have to, I, I don't know, I, I can't speak for him, but, uh, you know, maybe he, he didn't wanna, maybe he didn't wanna put any money into the road, but if, if the neighbor put the money into the road, I didn't know if that would solve the problem.
Kathy, was that you?
That was me. I'm sorry, Heather Wilson.
Oh, Heather, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Uh, my husband Alan was able to call in, and so are you able to hear him on his phone if he, may he address?
Maybe.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? Hi. I'm, I'm listening to your solicitor, and I just, if, what we're proposing and what Mr. Henry has spoken to is both of these driveways coming off the common cul-de-sac, which makes them separate in my eyes. And there, like we said, there's plenty of room there to do that, and I'm not, not sure what Mr. Wells' main issue is with sharing a driveway, but he, you know, he doesn't wanna share a driveway, and that's okay. I don't, I don't have a problem with not sharing a driveway. It makes it more complicated, but if he doesn't wanna share, that's up to him. I'm not sure why. But I do have, I, I was reported that early in the meeting, there was some proposal to come in from the other direction. That's, that's not possible. I don't know who suggested that, uh, maybe Mr. Wells, but that's not possible nor can happen. So, the, the proposal that Mr. Henry and Mrs. Henry are proposing there makes the most sense. I don't know what happened years ago. I don't know why he did not use the right-of-way that was provided for that lot. Uh, when I purchased that nearly twenty acres there, I purchased it all. I didn't purchase part of it. And I'm not sure how his problem becomes mine.
Okay.
So, um-
If you could pause one second, I think, uh, our planner Corey wanted to mention something real quick.
Well, I was just gonna state that the current plan that we have right now does not, it shows a shared driveway. It doesn't show the two, the split.
So we need a new plan with the shared, with the parallel driveway.
Yeah, so this is what it currently looks like. We went out, and you can see it kind of already has-
Oh, okay.
It-
Actually, one part of it is part, it's degraded, but it's asphalt. And the other part is, that's actually to the right side of that picture is all gravel.
So it's the left is Mr. Wells' current driveway.
Okay.
To clarify this for me, so this, Mr. Wells' driveway is on the neighboring lot?
Yes.
It was.
It, it is.
And it's still it.
In the right-of-way to Susan Lane.
To me, it says it should go to courts because that's a land dispute. I mean, even if you did a separate driveway, the fact that his driveway is on someone else's property is somewhere down the road going to be a, an issue.
Yes.
And, you know, I think you folks should really get out ahead of that one and, and, and have a have a court look at this and decide how this should go. And that's, I'm, I'm, no legal advice.
Well, had Susan Lane been extended as was originally planned, it wouldn't made any difference.
Yeah.
It, it would've taken care of itself.
That's just, that, that's, that's mind-boggling.
That could be an option as well. They could extend Susan, or the cul-de-sac out longer so that Mr. Wells actually had township public road frontage that he could access his driveway with.
But people didn't build their driveway where it was supposed to be originally, so, and this was all thirty years ago.
So basically, I'm gonna look at all of us for the board here. Um, there's, do you wanna make any decisions this evening?
I do not.
Okay. So, um, I thank everyone for coming and giving us the information for hopefully a future meeting where we can, um, maybe make some decisions about some things.
Excuse me, didn't we have another question about the sixty-foot, fifty-foot right-of-way?
I think we did, but I think it depends on whatever comes back. Is that correct?
Right. There's no point in acting on a waiver request for a plan that has to be modified in some fashion.
Well- The waiver request is for Smith Road.
Yeah, it's a different place entirely. Different side of the development.
We could.
At least that's my understanding anyways.
Is, I'm gonna ask Denise, Corey, and maybe Jeff, is it, is it, do you see any negative effect of us doing the waiver decision tonight that could negatively impact any other changes that come through?
Not with that side of the plan. I guess it would just be slightly out of order how they're, how the, the planning process typically happens at the meetings, but I don't-
So we should wait for the plan first?
I mean, it's the-
I would recommend that you do everything in a-
Let's do it right.
Let's do it in order. Okay. Is that okay with all of you?
That works for me. I guess, I, and I can't, I'm not gonna vote on this cuz I have a conflict of interest. But I guess what, to be fair to the Wilsons, I think they should probably know whether the board feels like they will or they won't because it costs money to put ink on paper and have somebody do that, and if it looks like the board is not willing to grant the waiver, then they need to know that. Rather than waste it, you know, it'll be another plan coming back in, and I, I just soon not have what we had here with the fellow up on Orchard Lane. I'd rather just have a clean plan come through.
Well, we, we can definitely talk about the waiver. We don't have to make the decision tonight, but at least they would get a sense of where we are with it.
Why are we asking for a waiver to reduce the right-of-way?
Kathy, I'll let you speak on that.
This is the waiver on Smith Road?
Yes, yes.
Smith Road has all different right-of-way widths. Down by the animal hospital, I believe it's thirty-three feet. On one side. When we did the, um, Hall property, they granted the waiver for the right-of-way to be, um, half a fifty on, on the Tom Hall side. I don't know who's on the opposite side of Smith Road. Um, so we're just, we're-
Essentially, the SADO that you've passed recently requires that a sixty-foot right-of-way be on any of the roads, and they're asking for a waiver of that. What would happen is five additional feet would come off the Wilsons. And then that would be for any type of, if you need to do any roadwork or expand, expand the roadway or even do, um, any type of stormwater easement. Rather than have to go back and get a separate agreement, the SADO requires that it would be sixty feet. They're asking to waive that five-feet requirement for them. And they're considering that, uh, I believe, uh, an undue hardship because it was created in a previous plan that was approved in a different SADO, and so they-
So basically, it's a grandfathering.
Um, I wouldn't say so because you have a new subdivision coming in with a new SADO requirement.
Yeah.
Is it restricting them from doing something?
Not that I'm aware of.
So what is the hardship?
Yeah, did you hear just what Fred said?
I did miss that, I'm sorry.
Smith Road in front of the Wilson property is already a dedicated right-of-way of fifty feet, which was dedicated by Mr. Smith when the original subdivision was done. So Wilsons do not own out to the center of the road, but what your ordinance would require him to do was reserve an additional five feet of ground for a right-of-way.
Correct.
Yes, so the township owns a fifty-foot right-of-way in there now. It's been dedicated to them.
Again, what, the question was, what is the hardship?
Yeah, so based on the new-
You have, you, you have Smith Road going all over the place, different right-of-ways.
No, there's no hardship.
I'm sorry, did you say there is no hardship?
That's what I heard. So again, we don't have to-
It's more consistency. Now-
Okay, so we don't have to vote on-
If this was the sa, same case on the Hall subdivision just, what, two years ago, why was it not applied then?
We had a different zoning in SADO then.
No, it was the same thing.
No, no, it was not. The SADO was just recently approved, and it has changed.
But Smith, but, but Smith, but Smith Road is specifically stated sixty-foot right-of-way. That was though changed.
No, but there, the ordinance.
Okay, so again, we, we aren't gonna vote on this tonight. Do, uh, do any of you wanna give a, a thought on which direction, um, just in case they wanna, need to make any adjustments or have something ready for when they present the plan again?
We changed that specifically so that in the future, we would have room to move poles or to do whatever we needed to widen that. But the issue is, like they said, there's all different through there, but we were trying to come up with a new, with a adequate standard. Was that the idea?
Yes.
Corey.
Well, and, and to go from that, the township has the right in the, in the future to contend property, to make that right-of-way the same throughout the, all of Smith Road, but the township is gonna pay then for this five feet back again.
Right, this is your opportunity to, since the subdivision is coming in, these are the requirements in which it is not a taking.
Is this a taking? It's a taking. If the township makes you widen a right-of-way, it's a taking.
Is it a ta, well, we can ask Mr. Jeff Stover that too, but is it a taking if our SADO requires sixty feet?
If you take that.
Brown, you've taken it.
I heard-
It's a taking. It would be a taking after the fact. If we decide we need the sixteen, we've approved fifty, now we have to go back to get the extra five feet, we'd have to, that would have to be a taking.
Yes.
Why is this not a taking if the township requires it?
Uh, because it's a voluntary act of the applicant to submit their plan, their land to subdivision, and to, uh, and if they wanna get approval, they gotta follow the rules for subdivision. So that's why it's not a taking.
Okay. I'm just gonna say this from the sense of the room, without everybody saying this, but I'm getting a sense that we would likely not approve the waiver. Um, I would like if any of you wanna say otherwise?
I feel like we changed our SADO for good reason, and we probably should stick with it, so.
Okay. Does anyone have different feelings? Okay, so there's a preliminary, uh, we didn't vote officially, but that's our preliminary feeling is that we would likely not approve that waiver. So-
Okay. What was the planning commission's, um, recommendation? Because they took a vote on it. Do you have that with you, Denise?
Yes, the planning commission recommended that the plan be moved to the Board of Supervisors for approval with the waiver being requested.
Okay. We always appreciate the recommendation or the suggestion of the planning commission, but
Ultimately is the-
ultimately, it is our decision. And again, we're not voting on it yet, so if, you know, we can think about it. Um, but typically, when we change things in our ordinances, they are for good reason, and we have, uh, you know, something might have happened in the past that caused an issue, so we make those changes so that forward that we don't have those issues. And that's kinda, our, our board is pretty good about sticking with that. So.
Well, I, I guess in this case- I, I would like to, uh, to see the township go all along Smith Road and, and make, make the right-of-way consistent instead of going from thirty-three feet to fifty feet, back to thirty-three feet.
We would actually like to-
Have that opportunity.
It's all over the place.
Yep, thank you, but, but, I mean, the waiver request is still there, so we still have an opportunity to, to discuss and, and vote on that.
Right.
Okay.
So I recommend you table this
Yes.
until the developer gets back to us, and then it will go back to the planning commission.
Okay.
Uh, if there's a waiver request for the driveway.
Yep.
Um, if there's something else that would happen or change, of course, it will go back down to the planning commission for their comments and review.
Okay. Um, do we need a motion to-
I have another question.
Oh, yes.
Um, for the township and Mr. Stover pertaining to two parallel driveways coming off of Susan Lane. Regarding specifically the driveway that Mr. Wells is currently using, that will the township require a separate document to be recorded? Basically, a declaration of private right-of-way that the Wilsons are giving Mr. Wells a right-of-way? That only the Wilsons would sign and not have to obtain Mr. Wells' signature.
Good question, Jeff.
Uh, Kathy, it'd be my thought that I don't think we need to mess with Mr. Wells at this point anymore, uh, but I would like to at, at least see some document for the twenty-five-foot- Uh, but I would like to at at least see some document for the twenty-five foot driveway that. Uh, the Wilsons will be using, indicating that that it is dedicated for their use only. And it it might note that Wells has his own that that is his.
Mr. Wells is still traveling over the Wilson property.
Yeah.
The Wilsons do not need a right of way for their own driveway.
I don't, I'm not saying a right of way, I'm saying some declaration that says that this twenty-five foot driveway is dedicated to the Wilsons. Something to make clear, well, Wentz and Wilson are separate driveways.
Okay, yeah, we didn't do that.
But wait a minute. What's your definition of dedicated?
I I might also recommend that this conversation is probably something that can happen outside of the supervisor meeting, it sounds like some work that you all may have to do. So I'm gonna go ahead and uh, ask for a motion to table this topic.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you Patty, any discussion? Okay, we will table that, oh, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, opposed, none, uh, we will table that until we get um, updated plans from the de- developer. Um, thank you all for joining us, like I said, uh, difficult topics, and I appreciate all of your. Discussion and information for us to try and make the best decision we can. Okay, um, well, next up is the approval of the minutes from the October eighth meeting.
There he is, that can go as part of the approval when we go forward. That's been tabled now.
The module's been tabled, okay.
The whole.
The whole item's been tabled.
Been tabled.
Alright.
I'm just trying to catch up.
Yep, yep, no, it's okay, um, approval of the minutes from October eighth.
I move that we approve uh, the minutes from the October eighth, twenty twenty meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Dave, any discussion, corrections, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, next up is the consent agenda, um, this is uh, some bills that we paid for October third to the seventeenth. Does anyone have any particular item that we need to pull out to discuss, or if not, go ahead and make a motion for the agenda, consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the period of ten-three twenty twenty to ten-seventeen twenty twenty.
Is there a second? Thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, alright. Um, old business, we still have property maintenance code, low priority on our list for right now, I'm assuming. We have bigger fish to fry, yeah. Uh, some new business, oh, we have the defined contribution plan to talk about.
Yes.
Okay.
So on the call, Brian, are you there? I believe we still have Brian Wilson, who is our representative from PSAT's Investment Trust. Um, let me pull up, there's a couple of decisions that the board will need to make.
And while you're, I'll let you do that, um, this item is to. Offer a defer- defined contribution plan instead of, what's the one that we have now called?
We have a defined benefit.
Defined benefit, I always forget that, um, we have defined benefit right now, but. For any new employee that we would hire from this point forward, they would be in a defined contribution plan, so um. Just gonna pull up some information, we'll talk about what the benefits are of that, and so a couple of decisions that we have to make about it.
Okay, so some of the items that you need to make decisions on, what I've done is, uh, I've taken the letter, kind of the plan documents. Um, and I've gone through and put my recommendations in red, and we can go through and discuss what the items are and what they mean, you can make your decisions, and then. From that, we can make a motion to have the plan documents um, drawn up. And then we'll bring back to the board for a discussion with Summit Financial and with PSAT's to adopt those plan documents, along with a resolution. That adopts the overall plan.
Okay.
So uh, beginning, it would be what we want the plan year to be, of course, it's gonna be calendar year to go along with everything else that we have. The compensation will be our W two compensation for any new employee. The normal retirement age, sixty-five, that would be in line with our defined benefit plan, so we're just keeping it consistent for your normal retirement age. Um, what we're looking at is that um, the employer contributions require that you. If you work less than thirty-five hours a week, you wouldn't be uh, able to be included in the employer contributions. The minimum age in service, um, our documents on our checklist, so it kinda gives you some ideas. It's basically when you'd be eligible for the plan, a lot of places will do twenty-one, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't do eighteen. For a minimum age, and your minimum service is six months, um. So then the match is, do we wanna consider a match? So if an employee puts in a certain percentage of their salary, do we wanna match that and encourage people to save? Um, and if we do, my suggestion is we can match up to, say, six percent. There are a couple of options here, you can do like, the employee puts in, you might do two percent, no strings attached. You can do then, if you put an additional three percent in, we'll match that three, there's all different kinds of of options you can do. When I'm looking through this plan and kind of getting an idea of what some other, not only government agencies provide, but other companies that are um, non-governmental. Six percent seems to be a pretty average amount.
And just so you know, are are you gonna go through everything first and then we can?
Yep.
Talk about, okay.
Okay, um, your entry dates, so when these contributions start would be immediately upon the availability or upon your um. Six months of service. Um. There's no salary deferrals, um, the employer contribution, the allocation conditions. Uh, let me go to these allocation conditions, I gotta remember this. Okay, so. How this works is at the end of the year, you can require that a person be there the whole year before. They get their employer pieces, uh, employer contribution, and you have to be at work at the end of that year. So if you did six months and you're not, so you quit in July or get fired in July or whatever it might be. You don't get anything for that year if you're gone at December.
Okay.
So my suggestion is to not do that.
Yeah, I don't like that.
And however long you work, you get those contributions. Um, the matching formula, this is where I would suggest that we match a hundred percent of your salary for up to the six percent.
Say that again?
Um, the employer contributions will match a hundred percent of your six percent going in.
That's pretty standard, I was actually just this week looking at my own retirement plan, and six, six, seven percent is kinda where it is. Um.
Dollar for dollar?
Yeah, the the employee match, where uh, some companies will actually, for that last, to to eke out that last percentage of company match. They'll say, well, we'll match five percent, five percent even, but if you wanna get five and a half percent match, you have to take it to six percent. And then take it, get it to six, then you have to take yours to seven, so that that's an option as well, it encourages further saving.
There are a hundred different ways you can choose this, and and so what I'm saying is if you put in three percent, we'll match it up to six percent, so. Not that if you put in three, we put in six, we'll put in three for you because you've matched three, it's just an even match.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, the period for determining the match, uh, we could do monthly, quarterly, or annually, I just said per pay period, because right now we have a monthly pay period. If that ever changes to bi-weekly, we don't have to go back and redo documents, it's just per period. The vesting schedule, so this is um, when you would get that money to take with you that we've provided as an employer. And the recommended schedule that I'm providing to you is, one year, after one year, you get twenty percent of what we've put in. After two years, you get forty, three, sixty, four, eighty, and five, a hundred percent. So that vests you a hundred percent after five years of service.
They always get what they put in.
You always get your own, this is.
And they can put in, if they put in that six percent, then we match that six percent, but then they can put in as much as they want up until whatever the government.
Nineteen thousand five hundred is the max.
And then they can draw on this, this is like. It's, is this where you have to be fifty-nine and a half?
So.
Sixty-five is what you're saying.
So there is, there are some.
By government.
Ways that, like, if you have a medical emergency and you need to draw on this. Yeah, you can, so this almost becomes a. Emergency savings account in a way, you don't want to draw on it necessarily, but you're not gonna, it, you have that ability.
Five, not fifty-nine and a half like the 401Ks and.
Correct, is that right Brian, am I wrong in that?
No, you're not wrong on that, now, you're gonna wanna use the four fifty-seven, that's the emergency. Uh, because there's no vesting schedule with the four fifty-seven, the four oh one A, they, you have to meet the vesting schedule before you can withdraw on that.
Right, but I'm, what about the age, is the age what we determine, or is it the government's fifty-nine and a half?
No, you determine the age, the retirement age of the plan, now, the retirement age is actually not a big deal with the four oh one A. As it is with the defined benefit, it only comes into play if, when you hire new employees and they're on the older side, say sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four. Because once you reach, say you pick sixty-five, then you're fully vested. You can also amend the retirement age at any time, so if you start out. And say at sixty-five and you wanna give more of a benefit to the employee, you can change that to sixty-two, um, you can always amend the plan.
The reason we recommend sixty-five is because. It stays consistent among the four fifty-seven and the four oh one A.
So some employees don't have like an extra benefit or something from that, okay.
Um. If somebody were to leave the plan, uh, like, let's say somebody only works three years and leaves. So they're not fully vested, what is that percentage that comes back to us, what do we do with that? And what we're saying here is, we reduce the amount we have to put in of our contributions moving forward.
Okay.
Okay, um, the form of distribution, so if somebody leaves. Um. What happens, Brian, can you help me with this one, this was, the reason I chose lump sum is so that there weren't administrative costs.
Yeah.
Um, with leaving the money in the plan, oh, so if you leave, you've gotta take your money and go. Yeah, we don't care what you do with it, but it's not gonna sit in our plan, because then we incur administrative costs.
It's important how people pull it out, or they'll get hit with taxes, they have to roll it over, yeah.
Yeah, but it's a lump sum.
Right.
Did you wanna say something, Brian?
Let me pay, yeah, let me play devil's advocate real quick, and that's totally fine, and we see a ton of townships, they lump sum. Get them off the books, and that makes a lot of sense, but just to give you another perspective, the reason why townships would choose monthly installments. Or partial distributions is to give that employee the flexibility to keep the money in there, if they don't have an employer lined up. Or if they don't wanna go to a bank right away and put up an IRA and incur those fees. Um, then they would provide that flexibility to that terminated or former employee, uh, but I understand the lump sum too, if you want them off the books. Uh, you know, take your money, kinda move on type of situation, that's totally understandable, and we see that a lot too.
So can I ask a quick question, uh, with the lump sum, is it like immediately upon leaving the township, you have to take it within a certain amount of time?
Yep, it's sixty days.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, it's not like that day.
Cause the check has to go not to them, but to wherever it's gonna go, or they get.
Yeah, it's not that day.
Yeah.
Um, and then. Uh, for deferrals, uh, in-service, Brian, can you speak to that one, I would have to look at our.
Yep, so in-service distribution, this is a component that we can build into the plan. That allows the employee on the four oh one A side of things to withdraw on their money at fifty-nine and a half. Before meeting that sixty-five retirement age and to start withdrawing. Um, it's kind of a safeguard though to not do that, because we see some employees, this has happened, they hit fifty-nine and a half. And they withdraw a lot out of their retirement plan, and unfortunately, that defeats the whole purpose. And they don't, they run out of money before sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, so you gotta kinda. See here what you wanna do for the employee and. And understand that some employees kinda don't have the discipline to keep the money in there, and what it's attend intended for is. Money to be used in retirement.
So my suggestion is to make it that sixty-five is is what it is, so that you're not, i- if you wanna do early withdrawals on something, you can set up a. Get a financial advisor or set you up with another item, but from the township perspective, this is. Keep your money in there so you can retire and.
What if fifty-nine and a half is the person's retirement age?
Yeah, if fifty-nine and a half is, then they would have that regardless, I mean, if it's used, say.
That's kinda what I'm thinking, is I feel like people are retiring earlier these days, I don't wanna be working until I'm sixty-five. Uh, but.
This is while they're still working. So this is, if you're still working.
Is it?
One, one, one quick thing, one quick thing here, so if you're fully vested, let me just make sure you're clear on this.
Yeah.
If you're fully vested and you meet the vesting schedule and you retire at sixty-two, you get that money. That money goes to you, you don't have to wait to sixty-five, just because the plan says their retirement age is at sixty-five. The retirement age is not telling you when you have to, you're allowed to withdraw the money.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So.
Yeah, yep.
I chose none because you can see here, this is while the employee's working, so if you're fifty-nine and a half and still working, that's whether or not you can withdraw, and I'm saying. No.
So that's what in-service means, well, in-service means they're still working?
Right, while they're working, exactly.
Gotcha, I see.
Working, they have to take their money and put it somewhere else then.
Right, if they're not working for us.
They can roll it into something else.
That's right, but if you're working.
And then they can draw it out because they're over fifty-nine and a half.
Yeah, if you're working for us, you're not drawing at the same time.
Okay. Makes sense, okay.
Um, and then participant investment direction, do we wanna tell people um. What what items they have to, uh, hold on, that one. Brian, do you have that?
What mutual fund it, yeah, let me explain this, so, uh, ninety-nine percent of townships will let the. Participant choose what they wanna invest in, uh, simply because they know what's best for their goals, how much they've already saved, what they're trying to achieve. And I will sit down with with their employees and kinda run over a game plan for them, so I I would advise letting the employee choose what to invest in.
Absolutely have yes, so we have yes, and then the rollovers is whether or not you can roll this over into an IRA, correct?
Yep, you can roll it over tax-free into not only that, but any other traditional uh, employer plan, another four oh one A. Uh, 401K and other uh, retirement plans.
Okay.
So.
No, no fees associated with that, no fees associated with that rollover process.
So this is the decisions on just to build the plan documents, this isn't approving it, this is. Are these the items that we want so they build the documents?
Can you go back up to the top?
Yep.
And we'll see if anybody has any comments or questions about things.
So if they don't put in anything, we're not putting in anything.
Correct.
So they can choose whatever percent they wanna put in, and then we would match it up to six, that's what this is saying, okay. Um, I'm just asking, in today's world, I know during tougher times, companies would match like fifty cents to a dollar. That kind of thing, are we okay with matching dollars?
Uh, another common one too is, like, I think you mentioned this, we put in three percent regardless of whether they contribute or not, and then. If they put in. Well, and like another three or four percent, we would match like the three, if we wanna, we could get that six percent different ways, we could. We could only match it if they put in six percent, or we could put in three regardless, and then just put in the other three if they put in. Yeah. Or or three, I don't know how we would do that.
Hmm, oh, it would be three, yeah, to get it up to six, right. Any thoughts?
It's nice to give them some, but.
I kinda feel like eh, you you give what they're putting in? I mean, I I understand what you're saying about giving a three percent, even if people aren't contributing, but.
Yeah.
Eh, if someone wants to contribute to their plan, they're gonna do it, whether you give them incentive or not, I mean.
If they don't, then they don't have anything.
Yeah. Well, but then that's their own shortsightedness as well, so.
I think the maximum ought to be five, it's gonna be five percent. And as far as investing goes, I don't want anybody to be fully vested and get, walk out of here in five years, that's not gonna happen in my lifetime. Um, it, it's too short of a period of time. You know, if the goal is to retain employees long term, then you have to make it so you wanna stay, I guess.
It is rather interesting with our current staffing, that we typically have people stay for a decent amount of time. But, uh, so it's not like we have a whole lot of turnover here in staffing, but.
Apparently, we do not, that's correct, but.
But going forward.
I think that's fairly common, right, cause I've worked for places where it's been five years, and then I've worked for places where it's zero. Like, you're automatically vested, yeah.
Because of the nature of how the work has changed, this is very common. Um, and in fact, this is actually. Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is on the safe side.
Yeah.
There are a lot of places that offer.
Instant.
Instant, a lot.
Yeah. Do, um, Brian, did you have any, does, Brian, can you offer any sort of best practices around that, or what you see most often?
Absolutely, so your traditional defined benefit plan, which you already have, which you're closing off to new hires. You, that provides such a immense monthly benefit in retirement, that I would agree that vesting schedule needs to be more strict. Uh, the ten years, the fifteen years, but with the four oh one A contribution plan, you're looking at traditionally five years vesting. Um, and there's a couple ways you can do that, you know, you can do the five years where you have to get the five years, and if you serve four years, you get zero percent. Or you. And if you serve four years, you get zero percent, or you guys can even do a graded vesting schedule. Where you gradually give them ownership, um, every single year, so year one, twenty percent, year two, forty. Year three, sixty, year four, eighty, and then finally you own a hundred percent in year five.
So that's what Denise, you're suggesting here is gradual.
And that's the employer contributions, you get all of your own.
All of your own, right, that's just what we put in.
Correct.
Right, but if we get an employee to come here and they work a year and they leave, I, I don't think. I don't think they should get anything, uh, you know, I think. Eh, especially starting at, at six months, I mean, I'd be okay with that if, if we stretched out the. If you're here two, three years, you know, we know if you're gonna be an employee or not, a good employee or not. And if you're not, then it's time to move on, if you're a good employee, you're gonna wanna stick around it. Percentage is not gonna make any difference now, it's a nice, nice incentive for people that are gonna be here for a longer period of time. So say, hey, if I'm here five years, you know, I'm fifty percent, maybe at, at seven years, you go to a hundred percent or something like that. But it's a heck of a bonus, it's a lot of money that, that, you know, we definitely have to put someplace and, eh, to pay for it. If you want long-term employee loyalty, I, I just don't wanna say, oh, you know, eh, there are, there are people that work in the. Construction industry, you know, if they sit there and look and say, man, I got, you know, five thousand dollars in that retirement account, I think I'm gonna take off next year.
I actually, uh, think the opposite, I think giving people a hundred percent upfront, eh, I think is more loyalty.
You might as well just give them their paycheck then.
Well, because if you're, if you know, oh, I, I gotta make it to five years. I know a lot of, so I, I work at Penn State, I know a lot of people at Penn State who skate by pretty mediocre. To get the benefits, cause they have to be there for a certain amount of time to get.
That is a common problem.
Yes, so I'm, I'm a little bit opposite of what you're thinking there, Dave, thinking that the loyalty is, we're giving you your benefits, here you go. And that's loyalty, like that is a give, uh, cause one of the jobs I had, you got a hundred percent of every benefit on day one. That's an employer.
Well, there's, there's a difference, you know, it depends where your money comes from.
Sure, of course, I, I know, yes.
You know, sometimes it's not easy.
Oh, absolutely, and this is still liquid.
Uh, not liquid fuels.
Might be liquid.
There's been too many funds, too many numbers, um, this is still act two oh five eligible money, so we'll, this is, uh, state aid. We'll still get state aid, when people are in, in these plans.
I'm okay with the five years. I don't think we should extend it past five years.
Yeah, I think it's fine, I mean, and really, if you're a hundred percent vested after five years, you, we match what they put in. How much are people really putting into their retirement account at, you know, over the course of five years? Where it's not gonna break the township's back to match it?
We're already broken, that's the problem.
Well, yeah, but we're on a different topic now, but what I'm saying is.
I think it's important that we do set up something, and, and, you know, for the retirees. A- and I have to say that the previous plan that we got, I mean, no- nothing against the people that work here, but. Holy fright, I mean, that's, that's a fantastic deal, it's kinda like being a state trooper, you know, the money just rolls. But.
So, so.
You know, I, I just think that we oughta give them at least a couple of years to see if they're worth it beforehand. And if we, and if at year three, we go to fifty percent, year five, we go to a hundred percent, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But there's just too many people that just come and go and.
So are you suggesting zero, zero, fifty?
Fifty and then a hundred. Or fifty, seventy-five and a hundred, or something like that, you know, it just, at some point where, where people. They're actually gonna be here.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm okay with that.
And if we don't like it, we can.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, I, I was just trying to point out that I didn't wanna push it out to ten years or fifteen years, I think five is, eh, where it needs to be.
All right, you wanna do.
Hey guys, guys, you can always amend the plan too.
Okay.
You can come back and we can always amend the plan, the one thing you can't do is take away the benefit.
Okay. Eh, Brian, is it, is it crazy what we're suggesting is zero, z- zero percent?
No, absolutely, no.
Okay.
Absolutely not, I, I actually, we set up the township a couple weeks ago, they did the exact same thing.
Oh, good.
So after three years, the employee got zero percent, year four, uh, they got seventy-five percent. And then year five, they got a hundred percent, so, uh, one year short, instead of going fifty, seventy-five, a hundred. They just went zero, seventy-five, and then a hundred in year five.
I'm okay with that, yes, I like it.
So fifty, seventy-five, a hundred.
Year three, so you're saying one to two years is zero, year three, fifty percent, year four, seventy-five, year five, one hundred. Is that what you're saying, is that okay, Dave?
Yeah, that works.
I, I just, I mean, having employed a number of people over the years. Eh, there's just a lot of people, it's like, you know, sometimes they're a crappy employee and you give them a while and it's like, then they just leave, I don't wanna just hand out money.
Yeah.
Eh, if somebody's gonna be here three years, they're obviously dedicated enough to come and do it. And, and we are not the university as far as the quality of our retirement and our insurance and stuff, but.
Now, do you wanna keep a hundred percent and six?
I don't care if they wanna donate, you know. Eh, if they say make the theoretical a hundred dollars a week and they wanna donate six dollars to the plan and have us match it, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we're good, we're good, okay.
Do you wanna change any of the ages for either the retirement age, the age that you get into the plan?
Sixty-seven.
Dave, I can't work that long.
You're gonna have to, sorry.
I'm okay with this.
Are those okay?
And so again, for the employee, for our contribution, it doesn't start until you've worked six months, that's what that means.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yes.
But the employee can start putting money in right away.
Whenever, yes, just wanted to make sure.
That's right, right, Brian? Just wanna check.
Yep, correct, correct.
Um, are there any other items or issues? Do you have a problem with the lump sum with the?
I don't.
I don't have a problem with our standpoint, but I can see what it could really do to an employee if one spouse is working and then they retire and they get this money and. There could be serious tax ramifications to them.
Not if they roll.
No, no, I'm talking about if you actually go to retire, is that how the distribution's done when you retire, or they just come out as a lump sum, or how's that?
Oh, no, no, this is, this is, if you leave us.
That's only if they leave.
Or get fired or whatever.
Okay, the lump sum's fine.
Yeah, this is just to get it off our books.
All right, I just didn't want somebody to say, well, here's a hundred grand, have a nice day, and you're sitting there going, my god, the government's gonna take twenty percent.
For us anymore, they need to take that money and put it somewhere else.
And we don't wanna pay the admin fees on.
It, it doesn't say retirement, non-retirement, there just says form of distribution.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's also one thing, one thing on that.
Uh-huh.
That's also our job at P S A, to educate your employees on the tax. Pretty tax ramifications, also for them to understand the Roth versus pre-tax on the four fifty-seven B. So that's our job, we do a good job of that, making sure the employees are aware of the tax ramifications.
Okay. Oh, that's actually a good question, is this, do they have the option for their contribution to be Roth?
Correct, or pre-tax, or a combination of both, and they can also change that whenever they would like. It's just based on, as you probably know, it's based on the individual, uh, what, what one they'd wanna choose. And we actually have the software to help pick the best tax combination, if they should be in one or the other.
What we put in is, is what, pre-tax or no?
Pre-tax.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, all four oh one A is pre-tax.
But, but they can decide what theirs is, what their contribution is.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, going back. Uh, are we good with, yes, you can roll over and we want to guide people, yeah?
Take care of where they're gonna invest, yes.
Are, are there any other, do you see any problems or issues, we'll change this?
What, what funds do they, does P S A choose, do they have options to invest in, Brian?
Yep, our main fund is Vanguard, located out in, uh, Malford, particularly at P A. Uh, the reason why I use a, a lot of Vanguard is because they have the lowest mutual fund fees.
Yep.
So those mutual fund fees, uh, you know, we wanna, wanna use a high, uh, fund manager fee for retirement funds. We also have Fidelity and Opperheimer, um, two other funds they can choose from. And I, you know, I'm gonna have to break down to show them, you know, what sector they're in, what specific stocks they're in. Um, so they can look at that and choose that too.
Excellent, okay, so this is enough to get the documents.
Yes, and I can pull up the memo so you can make the proper motion.
Thank you.
Hold please.
Hold please.
There you go.
Lovely, who wants to read this evening?
Do we wanna do that tonight, or do we wanna take a look at the overall documents and just see?
It's, this is to.
Just get the documents created. It's not to approve the plan yet.
Okay.
They moved to end all new hires' participation in the Half Moon Township Defined Benefit Pension Plan. With P S A's Investment Trust and authorize the Township Manager. P S A's Investment Trust and Summit Financial to create Half Moon's four oh one A Defined Contribution Plan documents. Based on the decisions made in the checklist reviewed this meeting and bring to a future meeting for final adoption.
That's a beautiful motion, huh?
Thank you, Dave, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you very much, lots of info there.
Yep, thanks guys.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see, uh, we'll get through some more things this evening, um, so. I will probably have to have Denise, uh, start this a little bit, but I can talk about this a little bit too, while you're pulling up whatever you need to pull up there. So, uh, is it the CARES Act?
Yes.
So you know how we were, um, allotted like thirty-three thousand dollars for COVID-related expenses? So if we had COVID-related expenses, that's how much our Half Moon Township received. Um, Center Region Council of Governments is asking, only if there is money remaining in that fund. Would we be willing to give some to Council of Governments? Because they, as an entity, I don't think get the CARES Act, right, it comes to municipalities, I know. Um, but again, they're not asking, oh, it's only if we have remaining funds that we would not be able to expend.
Cause they have to be expended just for particular.
For particular purchases, so I'll let you go ahead and.
So, we, I can't spend the thirty-three thousand.
Yeah.
I, I just can't, I, I mean, I started putting, there's no way I can do it, because we haven't had COVID-related expenses the way. Other municipalities have, right, that's, we haven't had leave time for the staff, we haven't had furloughs or any of that stuff that we. Thought might use that thirty-three thousand. Um, now, I did, I mean, we went down to hand soap, so I've, I've put together the start of a list. Um, of items, and it looks like, so the cog request, originally when we discussed this with the cog. We had talked about meals on wheels and some other expenses that we, as a municipality, said, yes, absolutely go for it. What came back from the cog was a request for not only those pieces, but also COVID leave for all of the employees. And the request for Half Moon was over thirty-nine hundred dollars. Um, when we looked at this, um, we had originally said we would. Help with what we could in those items like the meals on wheels, not the COVID leave. So, there's a subs, uh, recipient agreement that we would need to have, um, signed. Um, Jeff had suggested a resolution for this, uh, we can put together a resolution, but he reviewed the document itself. And, uh, didn't find issue with it specifically. Um, the eight forty that I would like to give is that consideration that we had talked about, about meals on wheels. Um, but the entire request of thirty-nine, the board needs to decide if that's something you would like to do, because we can technically do it and still fit it within our budget. But you should know that that does not mean that we will get anything back, or have a reduced. Um, contribution or requirement for cog in the future.
So wait, explain that, say that again?
So the thirty, so the COVID leave and all those pieces doesn't lower our, our cost to the cog for next year?
No, absolutely, get, I totally get that, so what they're just asking for is, of the remaining funds that we can't spend. They're asking for thirty-nine hundred of that.
It's about, yeah, it's just over thirty-nine hundred, okay, so. So right now, when I, I mean, I have a couple little items I'll probably still add to this. But I've managed, if I, we do the eight forty, I'm only at like sixteen thousand. I, I can't find any other way, I mean, we're, we're gonna have.
Well, what do you do to get, it'll be sixteen thousand for one bottle.
You can't apply any of those funds to, um, technology?
It, over ten thousand, over thirteen thousand of that.
Oh, already is, okay.
Yeah, like we're, we're.
So that's making up the bulk of it already.
Yeah, and I made it so that the monitor, like all the stuff that we're gonna get for upgrades, so that we can have laptops, that the staff can work from home and everything. We're each getting two monitors, docking stations.
Still spending ten grand?
Yep.
I, I've never thought I'd say this, but I actually begged the burrow to bill me. Um.
Yeah, really.
And the, this is expenses already expended, right?
Um, no, this, this ten thousand we haven't paid yet for all of the computers and everything, we'll be paying that, and then we'll be getting reimbursed that.
And we only have until the, the end of the year, right?
Um, we have to submit our numbers by the end of the month.
Oh.
And then everything has to be received by the end of the year.
Okay.
Now, you're gonna, oh, sorry.
So what happens to that, there's about sixteen thousand that'll be left then?
Um, the county redistributes that, so some of those like nonprofits or somebody that might have. Funds that they can spend or get reimbursed can, but I, I mean, I'm out of options, the only other thing that was suggested was. Putting hand sanitizing stations in our parks, well, we can definitely do that, but then the refills of them create an additional expense for years.
Yeah, so the money will be used within the county somewhere, cause it only comes to us like this, when, when you request it. Or when we doc- have documented that we've spent it for the appropriate thing.
So I guess that's, that's actually our question, because it's not really our money.
Right.
It was provided to us to use for expenses. So, are we okay at giving the thirty-nine hundred to the cog, or do we want it to go back to the county to get redistributed?
Still gonna be a lot left.
Well, yeah.
It will be a lot left, that's true.
That's gonna go to the county.
So what?
What's the cog gonna do with it?
Well, they said for the furlough.
It's, yeah, COVID leave, it's unanticipated expenses with COVID leave.
I think, I'm okay with the Meals on Wheels thing, cause I think that's important, it's a good organization. I don't wanna give the money to the cog, the county was gracious enough to send the money to us, thankfully, we didn't need it. I would rather send it back to the county, and if the county wants to give it to the cog, that's their decision. If the county wants to send more money to Meals on Wheels, or any other county assist. Um, I would rather the county had it and made that decision, not us make that decision. That's probably not gonna be popular with the Center Region people down there at the, at the office, but. If they feel it's important to, to send the money over here to Center Region, the county could, in my opinion, the county should make that decision, not us.
And if I'm not mistaken, I'm just clarifying this, because the cog is made up of our municipalities. They, as an entity, have to, they do have to rely on us for their money.
Apply for that.
Yeah, they can't apply for those, they can't get that kind of relief, like we can, they can get some payroll relief, I think, and things like that. But they don't get any of the CARES Act from us.
I didn't see a big relief in next year's bill, so.
Um.
I think it should go back to the county, the county has more welfare service organizations, they have the, the county home down there in Bellefonte. They've got a lot of things that potentially, I would say would need a lot worse than an office building and state college.
Do you know what the other municipalities are doing?
Um, the, well, every municipality has spent all of their.
Oh.
Funding except for Harris and us.
Okay.
Um, and we, uh, had already informed Eric that our intention was to not provide the COVID leave. Um, but to provide the, a part that we had agreed upon with the, uh, like the meals on wheels portions.
Okay.
But this is ultimately your decision as a board to determine what you'd like to do, and if you would like to accept this sub. Or approve the sub-recipient agreement, which does not, it, all this says basically is, whatever we wanna provide, we can. So approving the agreement, I'll have to fill that in.
With the number.
Later, right, with whatever.
It missing includes the meals on wheels, we can put that in.
We can put the eight forty request or the thirty-nine hundred.
Whatever we want.
The Meals on Wheels, or did we not?
We did.
We did, yes. So do we need an agreement to still do that?
Or we just pay it, so this is a way to pay it and get reimbursed.
Gotcha, so we were gonna pay it regardless, we were gonna give money out of our budget. But now if we do this sub-recipient agreement, it can come out of that COVID funding. So, so I do like, okay, good.
So we could even make the meals on wheels then a little more, if we wanted to.
Well, that's already done.
It's already been done.
Yeah, that's, that's done for the year and.
So, and Jeff, you said that this agreement, this is just standard? Nothing of interest that we need to be concerned about?
No, the agreement looks fine to me, uh, I, I don't see, eh, eh, it's, what Denise just described is exactly what it does.
Okay. So we, so first we need to.
We can approve this, other municipalities have already passed this.
Other municipalities have already passed this and said, yes, we'll approve the sub-recipient, sub-recipient agreement, but haven't filled in that amount. They've just said we'll pay, um, what we can, okay.
Already authorized the eight forty for Meals on Wheels, correct?
Yes.
So.
We don't need to do anything in, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. We don't need to do that, anything in that regard. The Meals on Wheels will get their money, right?
No, I just need to know if you wanna do the thirty-nine hundred and we have to approve the sub-recipient agreement to get that eight forty out to them no matter what.
Okay.
So we need to approve that, but I need to know if you wanna do the eight forty or the thirty-nine hundred and include the COVID piece.
Is there a motion on the?
I'll make a motion to give the eight forty for the Meals on Wheels and return the rest of the money to the county.
And approve the sub-recipient, so.
Sub-recipient agreement?
Thanks.
Yeah, whatever.
So the motion on the table is that we approve the sub-recipient agreement to include the eight forty for the Meals on Wheels and return the remaining CARE Act money to the county?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion?
I would just like to say that as much as I feel for the COG and the furloughed employees and how they're fighting with their budgets, it's just in the same sense we are. Um, I have to agree with Dave in the fact that this is not our money and we need to give it back to the, um, county so they can redistribute it because it's their money and they need to make the ultimate decision. So, uh, as much as it's kind of paining me to not help out with COGS, uh, uh, payroll problems because of COVID, um, I guess, uh, I stand with Dave, so I just had the silver keys.
Cool, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good. Where are we? Um, request? So the next item is a request for the community center rental reduction and program offerings with Linda Franchak.
Um, so Linda and I have been having, we, we met pre-COVID and had a bunch of discussions about the community center and how we can best utilize this and get the community involved. Um, well, COVID, now, now we met again and had a discussion about how do we start offering some classes or something to the community because I think we're all starting to feel the itch of the need to kinda get out and get involved in things, but how do we do that safely? I think it's getting worse. Um, so Linda came to me and we had a discussion about she would like to offer two specific classes. One would be a painting class. It would be three ninety-minute sessions. And then the other one would be a women's, uh, retreat for like stress reduction and that would be on either Saturday, a sun, for, or Sunday. Under our current rental policy, uh, she would be paying a hundred dollars plus a sixty-dollar refundable deposit. Um, what she'd like is the board has the ability, even though we've changed our fee schedule at any point, you can make any type of waiver of that. She would like to have consideration for the four sessions to be fifteen each, so a total of sixty with a sixty-dollar refundable deposit fee. Um, we have been also talking about the, um, inclusion committee and how, you know, what does that entail and how do we say what we're not doing and quantify that versus what, what's success for us in inclusion and diversity and how do you quantify that? And the discussion kinda came around, maybe it's more about meeting your neighbors and welcoming people into the community. Um, there's this sense that I got moving here that there's the people that have always lived here and then the transient outsider community. How do we bridge that and get people more involved in just meeting your neighbors? So Linda would like to not only do this specific item, but wants to start offering a monthly class and work with community so that that monthly class is free. And maybe it's a lecture. Maybe it's something about, um, you know, the racial divide and we hold something here with maybe a Penn State professor and invite the community to come out for that discussion. So we're gonna start working together to do those type of items so that becomes part of that committee and it's something focused here that we can do in this center and use this for, for the community good. Um, we wanna call it Half Moon Community Connections.
I like it.
And, um, we wanna start getting people involved in that and see what we can offer. We also wanna make it an online portion of our website. Um, if you look behind you, there is a picture from Donna Hughes. It is a picture that she posted on Storm Town Neighbors and I just thought it was very regal and I asked her if she would print that so we can put it up here in our community center. What we wanna start doing is not only having art in here from local artisans, but have an online community where, where can I get, and I see this in Stormstown Neighbors, which helped prompt this idea. There's people that sell kombucha in the neighborhood. We have these home occupations that everybody's applying for. You would be surprised at what your neighbors sell. Why not support local? Why not have a piece of our website where you can go and have, you know, this is who to contact for this? Or we can sell it here, or look at the art when you come into this building and you can purchase these items from these artisans. And you can rotate it out. So we wanna start doing that and in order to get the ball rolling, Linda needs to also make some money on her, uh, adventures to do this. She's got, included in this are, you can go and check the links of the ideas of the two classes. Um, she's willing to purchase some chair covers so that the paint doesn't get on anything. She knows she'll have to sign something that says any damage you'll pay for, but her request is to get this started at a discounted cost.
I am definitely, I'm gonna start the motion cause I have had many conversations with Linda and I think having anybody step up in the community and take some leadership in making things happen is awesome. So if she's willing to do it, I'm willing to give her a little help to do that. So I make the motion to approve Linda Franchak's request to rent the Half Moon Township Community Center for four sessions presented at a rate of sixty dollars. Second by Patty. Any discussion?
Do we wanna consider just waiving the fee completely, given the times and the, um, fact that she is trying to help build the community? This is not something she's doing just for her own small, small group. This has the community, the greater community in mind.
It does.
So that strikes me.
She is charging for her sessions.
I didn't realize. Okay, there we have to have.
Community, we would like to, we'll come back and say.
I didn't realize she was charging the fee, so in that case, then yes, we have to have something. Um, I think sixty dollars is reasonable for four sessions, fifteen dollars apiece for, what'd you say, ninety minutes?
Yes.
That's five dollars for a half an hour. I think that's completely reasonable.
Any other discussion?
I would agree to with the proviso that they clean the building when they leave.
I think that's part of the agreement is they have to leave it.
I haven't seen the agreement and I appreciate Linda's doing something out here.
Yes, I think it's, they have to leave.
But I don't want it to turn into a, man, I just pulled down eight hundred bucks today.
No. And if there's damages, I think it's in the agreement, they would have to pay the damages and all that kinda stuff, yep.
Leave it like you found it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I would just like to offer that the solicitor may leave the meetings to help prevent, there's nothing else that we would need him for.
Great. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Stover.
Have a nice evening.
You too. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. See, saving money already. Um. Well, the debate's coming on in half hour. Hope to bust through this.
So the next up is a possible donation to Patton Township Lions Club and the Boy Scouts Troop Three Seventy-Five for helping out with the movie night.
Yes.
And I saw your memo.
So we, we had our wonderful movie night and it was very difficult to get somebody to come out as a food vendor. The Lions Club was more than happy to do it and despite the low turnout, they stayed for the entire movie so that there was hot chocolate and they made from, they were here about four. So from four to nine, they made about a hundred and ten dollars in food sales total. Um, and then Micah from the Boy Scouts of America for Troop Three Seventy-Five came out and charges nothing to put up the screen, all the sound equipment. So, uh, everything came back in between the Easter and, uh, the movie night and the Easter event. There's still a little wiggle room in that budget. We didn't go over it. Um, what was the movie night? Like six hundred something and, um, Easter was nothing cause we didn't do it. Um.
You're looking at about high threes, low fours on what you have left. I don't know the specific amount, but that's.
A hundred and fifty dollars to the Boy Scouts and a hundred and fifty dollars to the Lions Club for helping out.
Second.
Love that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thanks, Steve. Love it.
Uh, we'll, we'll let them know.
Cool, cool. Alright, uh, we are tabling, which we already said when we approved the agenda, the Comcast three year cause we're waiting on numbers from them.
I would just offer to.
Yes.
Look, we're watching.
Phone system, right?
So yes, um, the, we were supposed to have the agreement ready to go for this evening, but the numbers have changed because Comcast changed their rates and believe it or not, we'll get better rates. So that's gonna be tabled until we come back with the new updated numbers.
Excellent. Um, department reports are next.
No reports at the meeting.
Great, thank you. Um, committee reports, uh, I'll do my executive committee pretty quickly. We just met on Tuesday. A large portion of the meeting, which will come to the general forum meeting next week, is around the Whitehall Road, Whitehall, is it Whitehall Road?
Whitehall Road.
Regional Park.
Yes.
Um, that has been, it's going, going to be. Do you know where all the new development is happening?
Over towards, uh, the YMCA area?
Yes, um, before that, yep.
Way out in Ferguson or wherever.
So there's regional park that's gonna be there and this is a park that has been in the planning ten to fifteen years, I think. Lots of changes, all kinds of stuff around it. Um, and the, one of the biggest issues is around the financing of it because they had a loan that just keeps getting moved along and they have to use it, then they have to refinance and figure out how to do it because they haven't started the project yet. So, um, there's a lot of discussion around that. So that topic is gonna be coming to the general forum. As Half Moon Township, we do not participate in the Center Region Parks program, so we have very limited, um, input to that. So just wanted to let you know that. That's really all I got from that. Finance.
Um, nothing since our last meeting?
I have the Half Moon Township COG summary budget printed for Dave and Chuck. I'll give that to you on the way out.
Uh, Bob, anything from Human Resources?
No, I have, in fact, you can skip over my others. I have nothing since our last, uh, uh, regular meeting.
Okay. Pub, uh, for me, public services, environmental, we have a meeting next. Oh, I think we met before. The next meeting is the first of November. I don't think I have anything to report on that.
I'm sorry, you know what? I just misspoke.
Yes.
I, I, not exactly, but, um, we had some confusion about the library committee.
Oh.
Uh, the meeting was not immediately after that last executive committee meeting.
It was not?
No, it's on the sixth.
Oh.
Just wanted to let you know, that way you weren't thinking, whoa, you had this other meeting. No, actually, we didn't have it. So, it's, but we all got it, our dates straightened out.
That's good, okay.
Everything's good.
Ad hoc facilities, anything, Patty?
No.
Oh, I missed, uh, David, are you attending any of the TLU?
No.
Cory can actually update anything on the TLU.
Oh, lovely.
Uh, the biggest thing they discussed was a, uh, regional solar ordinance.
Oh.
So there are a lot of the communities around, or actually, there's one, a big one going in for Penn State, I believe, down in Franklin County. So they're discussing to put together an ordinance that would protect the township and kinda set aside certain areas of land that would be probably more suited for that.
And Cory, was that more so around the large, not residential, right?
Utility, utility scale.
Okay, utility scale, okay. Good, cause I think that.
Bugged me about that because everybody wants solar power and someday it will be economically feasible, but nobody wants it near them.
Well, it's like anything, right?
So we just look like a bunch of hypocrites when we say, we want you to have solar power, we just want it over there in Arizona where those.
We don't wanna see it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree and.
I think that's, if you, you could have obviously a, a ordinance just for the township as well to say that you don't want it in any certain areas.
Right.
But laying is just too expensive around here to stick a solar farm in and, and, and the solar panels. I don't think there's much danger of it. I think we're just trying to jump out. You know, a bunch of us passed cell tower ordinances. I saw a nice cell tower the other day down in, uh, out the other side of Milheim. It looked like a Christmas tree with panels on it. It was kinda different. But the problem with our ordinances when you adopt these ordinances are, you know, when you drive out five fifty, cell phone service stinks, to put it politely. And then when you get the Warriors Mark, which also adopted a cell phone ordinance, they don't have any service going out through there. So, you know, hey, we just stuck ourselves, you know? Who doesn't have a cell phone? So now we're, you know, say we, we wanna buy solar power. University wants to buy it, the township wants to buy it, the Center Region wants to buy it, but we don't, we wanna limit where it can be. And, you know, just because you planners have good ideas, doesn't mean it's an ideal spot to put solar power. I mean, it's kinda like saying, we're gonna zone it for coal mining over here, but there's no coal, so I guess we don't have to worry about it. You know, this is, this is second cloudiest place next to Seattle, Washington. It's not very practical for solar.
Well, I can actually say first, I'm actually not working on the, any of the.
I'm not, I'm not trying to pick on you, but that's, that was the first thing that came up. It's like, well, we gotta have an ordinance against this and then we're over here talking about how good it actually.
Well, but I think it's also not against necessarily.
It's not against.
It's to protect, it, whatever. It's not to, but anyway, well, we don't need to talk to it.
Not others, okay, yeah.
Environmental. So anyway, just wanna, it's good to know that's out there and I forgot I did wanna mention that because I think one of the other townships emailed, uh, the executive committee to remind everybody. We should put it on our list to start discussing at least, just to see what else is going out, going on out there in the world. Is there something that we need to maybe consider, that kinda thing? I think we did the same type of thing with a wind turbine. Any residential wind turbine, so.
Noise, I'd be more worried about it, but it's pretty quiet.
Yes. So anyway, good to know that that's in the works.
Something like that, you just wanna make sure it's on the books.
We'll, we'll put it on our books to, for discussion next year. Um, ad hoc, did I already ask you that?
Yes.
Patty, okay. Uh, let's see, anything else? Any other reports? Alright, good. Anything else for the good and the welfare of us or the township?
I just wanna acknowledge the fantastic job you guys did with the budget. That, that was not easy and I know that that got heated at times, but what a, turned out very nice.
I wanna acknowledge everybody because I think it's all of us that have to help each other come to something that is gonna work for everybody. And that's the most difficult thing, um, when, when you have to tighten the belt and tighten everybody's belt is, is very rough. So I, and I, I know, I don't think any of us are happy with where things are, but the happiest we can be in the situation.
It's the best of a bad situation.
And I, just to add, I'll just say the thing, to thank everyone for coming in with an open mind and being, being willing to negotiate with, you know, some, some tough topics and.
And some creative, creative ways to deal with our situation to have a budget that we can work with, so.
Well, maybe we could just sell advertising and put it up on the wall back here, cause we got a television camera. And maybe we could reimburse or recoup our money.
Some ad space right back here where the camera is.
I, I just want everybody to be aware because none of us has a crystal ball that can read the future. It's possible we'll be sitting here next year at this time saying things are worse. It's very possible we'll be sitting here saying everything's great and we don't even need the taxes that we just raised, so we can eliminate that. And I hope that's the case. But I want Denise and Brett especially, since he's the numbers guy, to keep an eye on how we're doing revenue-wise this year versus last year. And, and I know real estate taxes because they're all escrowed, but if people start losing houses or not making their escrow payments or something, if there's any faltering in what the pattern is, we need to know immediately so that we can make a decision or at least start paring back. Cause I just don't wanna hit, come to the end of the year and have it be like hitting a brick wall.
We're gonna have to work as we're gonna have to micromanage everything. I'm gonna have to continuously look and come to you guys, probably at least one of the meetings. You'll probably see me a little more than you usually have, just so I can tell you guys.
Well, I mean, I'd like to just have a monthly update. Here's our budget and here's where we are each month, so.
If Brett sees something, or Denise sees something, or Amy or anybody. Um, if, if something looks like it's going sour or we're doing better, please let us know immediately so we can sit there and say, okay, let's do a little analysis on this and see if it works for us.
Yeah.
So, hopefully things get better. If they don't, I just don't wanna get to the end of next year and say, oh, we gotta raise taxes another five mils to meet our budget, cause that ain't gonna happen.
Yeah.
I mean, then, then everything goes.
Yes.
As far as I'm concerned, because, you know, we've already put a lot of pain out there.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for the good of, and welfare? Alright, no other business? Meeting adjourned.